And commission meeting this evening. My name is Commissioner Hanson. I'm the current Chair of the Planning Commission. We'll have to excuse Commissioner Bullock, who had to leave for a family matter. He was up here. So Commissioner Mitchell will have you voting tonight and everything participating. We're going to go ahead and start our meeting with a prayer by Commissioner Anderson, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which I'll lead everybody in that. Commissioner Anderson.
My father and I were grateful for our many blessings. We're grateful we could be here. Planning Commission represent the citizens of Washington City and he's helped us to have good judgment and the temperament. We say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Would y'all please rise and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda, Commissioners this evening, is to approve the agenda. Have you had a chance to look at it? Are there any changes need to be made? Or I look for a motion to approve the agenda as is.
Commissioner Anderson, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Is she alive? Second that.
I've got a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the agenda is set for the evening. Second item on the agenda, we're looking for an approval for the minutes for May 4th. If you've had a chance to look those over, the copies that you've received, any corrections need to be made? Please indicate now. Otherwise for that as well, I look for a motion for approval.
This Commissioner Tupoe, I make a motion to approve the minutes from April, May 4th. May 4th, 2022.
Is she alive? Second.
Got a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
The minutes have been approved on May 4th, or for our previous meeting, May 4th. At this time, it's time to declare reason for an abstention or a conflict of anything that's on the agenda from the Commissioners this evening. I have none that I need to declare. Commissioners, anything? No? Okay. Perfect. We'll move right to item number four. This is a two lot minor subdivision. This is consideration to approve a two lot minor subdivision. The Magleby subdivision located approximately 245 South Main Street. The applicant is Jensen Magleby. I will turn the time over to staff for their report.
Thank you, Commissioners. At the address previously stated, the applicant is asking to split this parcel into two lots, with lot one being point two zero acres and lot two being approximately point two one acres. The current zoning at this location is the R16 zoning, 6,000 square foot minimum, with residential 6,000 square foot to the north, east, south, and west. Staff has reviewed the requested proposal and the proposed conceptual Magleby Minor Subdivision conforms to the standards as set forth in the zoning regulations and subdivision ordinances of the city. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the conceptual design of the Magleby Minor Subdivision based on the following findings and conditions as seen in your report. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Commissioners, any questions for Eldon at this time?
I tried to figure out the location. Is there already a house on both properties?
The lot to the south, it's 245 South Main. There's a home on the southern part. The northern part is vacant. That's the additional lot where that will come from.
So they'll both have a curb cut on Main Street?
Correct. Yeah, they'll come off of Main.
Commissioner Anderson, if there's a house on the, on the south parcel, does the existing house meet all the setback requirements and everything with the way they split the lot?
It does. We verified that with the surveyor.
And are they going to have to bring in, I'm assuming they'll have to bring in another sewer lateral to that, to the north lot?
Correct. Yeah, they'll pull.
Will they, will they do that when they go to build? Are they going to do that? When, when would that? Just when they go to build on the lot?
Yeah, I would assume they, they could do it prematurely and get it ready before they build. That's, that's.
I guess, I guess what I'm asking is, is that something that like Public Works or Planning Department is going to deal with? Are they going to wait till they apply for building permit and they're like, oh, I don't have sewer lateral? Or power or water or anything like that? Like, when is that going to be? Enforced, I guess.
Yeah, if they haven't done before building permit time, it would be addressed at that time.
Has the power company addressed the guy wires for its transmission pole? Drew, are you able to do a street view that might let the Commissioner see the guy wires issue that cross the frontage? I know that that's been a problem on prior attempts to subdivide this lot. You might have to do street view in a different map application. So at the corner of 200 South and Main is one of the big transmission poles from UAMPS, and it's got guy wires that pull to the south and cross the frontage of most of this lot. And so we'd probably have to have to verify whether a driveway could be built or how they would, you know, how they would deal with access to the to the northern parcel.
Yeah, that's something we definitely work through. Great comment.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, Drew, but I was waiting to see this. Cause my question is kind of off of Mr. Sigmiller's comments that made me wonder, is there a possibility that a driveway would not be allowed to be built there because of that?
I don't know. And, and I think that they could, in their subdivision plan, they could maybe create a shared driveway or something of that nature. So Drew, if down to the right, you see that little orange guy in the black corner there? If you drag him in front of that lot, it'll show you the street view. So those are the guy wires there, you'll see. And then if Drew rotates, you'll be able to kind of get a feeling for how much of that lot they cross. You see that there? And that pulls, that pole that they connect to is just a, just a secondary pole to the main transmission pole, which is still to the north.
Is that there for stability or is that there that takes it underground?
Uh, no, there's large aluminum poles to the north of that. It's, it's how the power company stabilized that big transmission pole.
This, this Commissioner Anderson, so I, I had to deal with something like this in a, in a development. And what we had to do, cause it is, it's just for stability, but what they can do, and this is what we had to do when we developed a lot like this, is you can come across over to the, to the end of the lot and you can put in another pole. And basically that acts as a stabilizer to this one. So you can deal with it that way. That's usually how the power company requires that to be done.
Then you go under it?
Yeah, then you can go under it because it goes straight across to the new pole. But as it sits right there, you couldn't put anything there. You'd have to address it somehow with those guide wires.
Well, there's sufficient room to put a driveway in. Now, you got guy wires in your front, you know, looking out your front window and everything, but that's, that's what it is. But you know, to enter the lot, I think you have sufficient, because I'm looking back there. See where the post box is right here? That fence back there is probably about where this lot's going to be split. It looks like the backyard of the house there. So it's going to come straight out there. That's plenty wide for a driveway and I'll just have their garage on the right hand side.
Is the mailbox there that's there by the location by choice? Or is that something that's assigned?
It's all one lot right now is the thing. That's.
I mean, it can be moved, correct? The mailbox, that's not like a mandatory spot. That's where it has to be.
It's a federal offense, but you can move it pretty easily.
I need to ask.
Just don't take a bell bat to it.
You never know. Is the applicant here by chance? Do you mind? Have you addressed this at all? Or do you have something you want to add to the conversation? The reason we want everybody to come up to the microphone is Melody's taking notes in the other room and she wouldn't be able to hear unless, so please state your name for the record.
First timer, Jensen Magleby. So for my calculations, I guess, is we have discussed like the pole being kind of in the way of the lot, but we figured that there could be a driveway just on the, the south side of it. That would give them sufficient room if they wanted to build on it. And the mailbox is already moved, so the mailbox isn't there anymore.
So you'd be okay with that, those wires being as they are with the home there where it's in your front yard and all that? Not for me to say it's bad, but that's fine with you?
I mean, yeah. We have looked in, it's good to know about like the power lot lines, but we, I mean, ideally, we would not like those lines to be there.
It's not as hard as it seems. I mean, you put, you pay the power company to come put one pole in and they run it across and fix it.
I didn't know how much the price is. We, we contacted the power line company and they told us they would replace it and it was an expensive amount, but they didn't give us the, that information.
They do charge it, but it's
I think this one is a UAMPS. This one's a UAMPS transmission line. Is that who you talked to as UAMPS?
I'm not sure.
I don't think it's a city delivery line. It's a transmission line that's got a, it's got that. I don't know what to call that one, that, that post that's got guy wires. Okay. Did you, did you look into whether there was an easement that extends beyond the last guy wire? Do you know if there's any power utility claim of an easement across that frontage?
I'm not entirely sure.
Well, we make everybody do a 10 foot PUE on every lot, so we're going to get it. If he wants to get this done and divided, we'll, we will usually put that on right now anyway.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate it. So Commissioners, if I understand correctly, as of now, they can make a driveway right there on the south end of it and we're good to go. Is that, are we hearing that right? Okay. Any other questions for staff?
So there, there won't be any potential, this Commissioner Mitchell, potential interferences with those guy wires and sewer or other utilities?
I think they gotta be moved.
Just go around them or go. Is there a way to know where the sewer will actually come in on that? If they add this sewer line? And I guess that all.
It's going to come off the street. They'll have to, they'll have to cut in a new lateral. If this is, so Drew, is this, well, this is just a minor subdivision. I mean, is it coming back for a final plat approval or this is it?
Two lot subdivisions just come to you for a conceptual design. Staff takes care of all the other review and gets them through the process of it, so.
So I guess here's my, here's my question. My concern is that if, if it doesn't come back to anyone else, I mean, and maybe staff just takes care of it, but I, I just think it's a bad idea. I mean, we, we wouldn't let, you know, a, a new subdivision get recorded or whatever without having the utilities in. And I think putting a lot here that doesn't have any utilities in, you know, I mean, they, these guys are aware of it, but let's say it's sold or sold a couple of times or whatever, and then someone goes to do something on and there's no utilities. I mean, it can be a big mess. I just think it'd be better if, if there's no other mechanism for it than, than, than just like we would with a, you know, preliminary plat or final plat that at a minimum, we gotta put in a sewer lateral and a water meter. I mean, I've, I've been stuck in situations where this, where there is no sewer lateral and something, you have to try and figure out a way to get it after houses are built and everything. Can be a real mess.
Well, John's going to sit there and tell you water lines are required to go in on a certain part of the lot, the sewer lines in another. So John, go ahead and tell them where they would go anywhere.
You're going to solve my problems?
Yeah, typically when they go to submit their plans for building is when we'll catch, because we'll get their impact fees at that point in time. So that's when we'll get them with water and sewer service. Most of them, building even has them come to us first and stuff, so that we can start coordinating where they're going to put the lateral and everything. We get a site plan, we get it all addressed ahead of time before they can even get their building permit. So obviously we put the sewer on the low side of the lot, water to the high side. This one, you know, we're going to work with them just because of those guy wires and that anchor pole there. So we have to maintain our 10 foot distance between the two service lines, but should be able to make it work. So.
Does the water go to the left of the property or is it the right side? Or is it, you don't have that anymore? I used to remember it.
It's.
We used to go right in the middle, right?
Yeah. Typically now what we do is depending on flow of the sewer, the sewer's lateral.
Give them the best depth, okay.
So from here, it looks like we'll probably be, yeah, would actually be on the north side of the lot.
The sewer?
Yeah. So it'd be on the farst, on the farst, yeah, up there, water service about where the driveway would be.
Okay, so the water would end up going down here, right? And you can go right by that. How, how deep are those anchors generally? Do you know?
I, on this pole, I'm going to bet those are eight foot, 10 foot anchors.
So they'll have to shoot, yeah. Can't go in between them, I bet, because that would loosen the dirt up.
But yeah, we have several, several of these lots that are in the old part of town that they've divided. They don't have their services and stuff. We get them, we get them put in as they just start to develop. We meet with them onsite, get everything laid out to meet our needs, get the curts, everything like that.
All right. So, so you're saying we don't need to put any sort of condition on here that, that.
No, they're not going to get their, they're not going to get their building permit until they met with us and we sign off on it, so.
I'm just saying, I've had three or four instances where this whole step got missed. And as a builder on the back end, had to try and fix it and it was a mess.
Yeah, we've, we've done a lot of coordination with, with building and building department to make sure that we catch all these ahead of time, so.
Hey Drew, just a question. Are we trying to make Main Street a Main Street? Or are we just going to leave it as a, just a regular old two road street, two, two lane street?
Yeah, let me kind of show you. Main Street's going to be an 85 foot arterial. I don't know, how many feet do we have already? Because I know, I don't know if this is still a night, I, I think we've given away, but I think it's still in the 80s.
Drew, this is Commissioner Anderson. Is this, is it going to be deferred or, or, or are you going to require a curb and gutter to be put in on these?
Okay, so here is a circumstance. We've given a back footage to everybody. We have 75 feet roughly. Are we going to go back and take feet from everybody when we expand Main Street? We may want to take that now. We'll worry about that in our review. We'll get that taken care of.
Well, I guess we should suggest that they put their house back further on the lot.
Well, we'll just go through again. This will all be reviewed and John's going to take a quick note right now when we go into that review process. If we, since we're doing this one now, we may just take whatever it is that we need right now on this one. You know, again, the difference is 10 feet, so they would have to go five, five feet more back. And when they do that, they'll just dedicate that to us right now. He'll look into that and we'll take care of that on, on the finished product that gets recorded. He'll have to go talk to his boss about what he, what they want to do on that. Because it would be the only pair in there in the street that would have that, so.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments? This is something that we are approving and we are not sending this to City Council. If not, I'll look for a motion on this item, five, four A.
This Commissioner Anderson, I, I won't hold it up for this, but I really think that splitting that lot off without having something done with those guy wires is, is not a good idea. For the record, that's my, that's my only concern and, and, and because I know that you can do something about it, so.
Then guy wires are going to be pushed back further if the road comes in there, right?
I think the big pole that is supported by the guy pole is at the same width. Drew, can you show that? So if they're, if they're going to expand the road beyond that, they're going to have to expand a really big pole.
If you can see my arrow right, barely right here, the, well, I'll draw a dot around it. Pole looks like it's right here. Can you see that red dot in the pencil? I'm just going off of the shadow. That's where the shadow starts or ends. And it looks like it's just barely a couple of feet inside. Five feet.
Yeah, in looking, in looking at our standards, I, I know on our transportation master plan, it says 85 foot right away. In our standards, in our standards book, it's an 80 foot right away. So more than likely we're, we're at 75 now. We won't, we won't take any additional right away. It wouldn't, wouldn't be worth the trouble that's going to be incurred on trying to take two and a half foot either side.
I'm just going to scroll up here. We'll see what we did up here.
What about this side? Do you guys have any questions? I think what I'm hearing is that there are some issues that, but they will all be addressed through the city and the permitting process to move forward. Am I mistaken in that, Drew, or is that?
No, it'll all be, it'll all be covered at that time.
Okay.
There's water in the street, there's sewer in the street. Their access is going to be limited to the south side. They have, they know they're going in with this guy wires in the front yard. They can't come back and say that we added them after the fact. They're creating this with the guy wires in, in mind and full knowledge of them, so.
Okay. Commissioners over here, is there anything you want to add to the record? Before we look to make a motion on this item?
This is Commissioner Mitchell. I mean, I feel like it may not be the ideal lot, but I feel like as long as setbacks are maintained and we go through the building department to make sure that all of the requirements are met. I guess looking at the surroundings and the current zoning or whatever it that fits that environment or location.
I mean, just keep in mind, you, you do a lot of flag lots. That's what you guys are used to seeing on these two lot splits. It's the same scenario. They gotta add a water line, a sewer line connect, the same thing, but they're running it up at 26 foot wide.
No, and I'm, I'm okay with, I'm, I'm okay with the whole, with, with doing the utilities later. That's fine. My only thing is, is the guide wires. But I mean, I guess, I mean, they, they, they have the right to, to split it, but the, the cost of fixing those guide wires is going to be a lot less than how much they'll lose in property value by keeping them there. But with that said, I'll, they, they can have that be their choice.
I think that's their decision.
And plus, it's a built-in clothesline, is it not? You always class half full or half empty, right? So a swing set, yeah. Zip line.
So it's a matter of aesthetics, but that's not up to us.
That's right. I, I think so.
Any other concerns you guys want to talk about or put on the record? All right, look for a motion on this item from somebody and we'll go from, we'll start there.
I'll take a stab at it. I would recommend that the Planning Commission approve the conceptual design of the Magleby Minor Subdivision based on the following findings and subject to the following conditions. The two findings and I, I believe the conditions have, you know, talk about the utilities and everything being completed and bonded for the final plat. So I think we're covered with those four findings or four conditions.
This Commissioner Tupoe, I second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Sheil, have a second by Commissioner Tupoe. Individual voting, Commissioner Tupoe.
Aye.
Sheil?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
I'm Hanson. I'm an aye as well. The motion passes by the Planning Commission here. We'll move the, to number five A on the agenda. This is a public hearing for consideration and recommendation to the City Council for a zone change request to approve design standards for Z dash 22 dash 11, located approximately Bella Vista Drive and Bonnie Lane. The applicant is Wasatch Acquisitions. And I'll turn the time over to staff for their report.
Thank you, Commissioners. The applicant, as stated, is requesting approval. Sorry that my computer's really. You can't see it, but my little bar at the bottom is being blocked to be able to increase the. Sorry. You know your little toolbar in your computers? Steve's going to do it for me. Just hold on. Give me one second here. I'll start reading. Hopefully he'll keep showing up on the other screen right in front of my plus minus. Okay, here we go. Yeah, those little arrows now are not being covered up. Thank you, Steve. The applicant is requesting approval to have the design and use approval of this already zoned PUD property of 13.77 acres. The request is for the specified site design and use of, of this particular apartment complex that you see before you. This particular property had an earlier design approval, but has since expired in time. The new proposal is with a different company wishing to develop this and a different design and layout of this particular apartment complex. The new proposed design and use is for the same 13.77 acre size. They're wishing to utilize the PUD multifamily residential standards as found in the zoning regulations. The development will be in the form of 32 townhomes. That will be eight fourplexes and you see them around the perimeter on the street side of Cactus, Desert Cactus Drive and Bella Vista Drive there, followed up by a 66 one bedroom. Followed up by sixty-six one-bedroom apartment units. Then there will be eighty-four two-bedroom apartment units and eighteen three-bedroom apartment units. This would be a total of two hundred dwelling units throughout the development, equalling a fourteen point five-two dwelling unit per acre ratio. The surrounding zoning to the project is the service commercial C two to the north and east. Followed up by P U D residential to the west and south. They allow density in this on this particular lot, according to the general plan, land use. Is seven to twelve dwelling units per acre and that falls within the medium-high density residential designation. The planned unit development standards allow for increases of units that meet the criteria is outlined in the ordinance. Developers wishing to utilize the increase of recreational facilities credit. And with partial credits for tree-lined streets and extra periphery landscaping, open space areas. And they also have a special street design as part of the north side of the Desert Cactus Drive. And that's you can see it's kind of like on Main Street where you have some pop out with landscaping, then it goes back in and pops back out. To landscaping, it helps keep traffic down, speeds down. Now, the required parking for the project would be three hundred and thirty-four stalls for the apartment units. With also sixty-eight parking stalls for the sixty-eight sixty-eight for the townhomes. That's two per townhome being thirty-two. And the additional fifty-seven stalls required for the visitor parking for the project. This would bring the total as required by the code to three hundred ninety-eight parking stalls. The applicant is showing four hundred and one stalls, including eighty-two garage stalls, sixty-four of those go to the townhome. Because they are a two-car garage with each townhome unit. And then there are eighteen individual parking stalls. If you look over here on the far right. Where my arrow is bouncing, those kind of beige colored are all single car. Garages that some people will have the opportunity to rent. I'm sure it'll just be on a case-by-case, first come, first served basis and they'll just charge a little more rent for a. One-car garage over on that side. There is also provided with the development an extra above and beyond ninety-one extra parking stalls and that's over here on the far right. This was kind of the original from that original approval, there was a. Storage area parking, they're gonna kind of utilize that same thing with this leftover area. Make it available for folks that may have an RV or or other place that they can rent out some extra parking in there that will be. In a gated area for protection there, so they're adding again an extra ninety-one places there. The applicant is showing sufficient parking for the townhomes and apartment units with staff as reviewing that. Staff is supportive of the project at this location with the building layout and exterior finishes being aesthetically attractive. Amenities are above the standard requirement and the project will be an added value to the area and to the city. So before I go into my recommendation, we'll just kind of walk through here and point out some of again on the periphery. It's hard to see my, I'm just gonna grab a pencil and do some colors. Just gonna put a star by, these are the the townhome units if you see up there. And that's all along the the border will be a two-story. Townhome unit. Again, with the two-car garage underneath it. Built into that, so. Yes, all down this street and along and I'll draw another X here. They're just saying these are all the same. These are all townhome units. All along here and and there, so. So that that's what you'll see from the street side mostly is these these town and we'll get into the elevations here in a second. Interior wise, these will be three-story. And again, there will be a mixture of one-bedroom, two-bedroom and three-bedrooms throughout these these kind of brownish buildings that are in between. You can see in between, they also have some. Landscaped areas for the folks to be able to come out and and just in between the units here, they just have some personal area, private area. There are several fire lounge pit cabanas scattered throughout. You can, if you follow in. I'll try to zoom down in there even a little farther.
So Drew, zooming in there at the grass areas.
Yeah.
Has is it staff's opinion that every like, do we have a designation here on what is grass areas so that we can apply the new ordinance?
No, we probably won't worry about that till they bring a, you know, again, because I'll show you in the elevations. They're just showing this is kind of, you know, sometimes they'll just use green as a landscaped area.
Yeah.
Now, this dark green might be grass area. We'll have the we'll have the applicant come up and define that. But I think we kind of roughly put that with the new ordinance and we're probably going to be okay. With with that limitations on square footage.
Well, this isn't square footage. This this is grass is prohibited in multifamily except for active recreation areas. But I remember my my city council years, I used to think those circles all meant trees and I know that they don't now.
Well, the bigger circles do do mean trees. It's the smaller ones. Yeah, is that because they they do have a. I think there's a legend on there.
Can you tell everybody what the new ordinance is on grass so they know?
Yeah, the new the new ordinance is the water conservation and landscape ordinance. Those passed by the city council and this would be the multifamily designation which says that. Grass is quote, grass is prohibited outside of an active recreation area. Grass is prohibited in park strips and all landscape areas that measure less than eight feet in width and on any slope that exceeds fifteen percent. And grass has a definition of. A surface layer of earth containing irrigated grass with its roots. And so I think from the city perspective, we would need to confirm that you'll see they identify certain areas as lawn area. And we need to confirm whether that's a water-using lawn or whether it's a synthetic and if it falls within an active recreation area. I'm not suggesting the commission has to determine that tonight, but that would be how staff would apply the new ordinance.
It seems like one of the biggest questions I get out in about every day is about water and grass and all that stuff, so as many people as we can inform, there you go.
Yeah, and like I said, I don't know if we need to get into the weeds so much on that. Well, that counts aside, how much, you know, that's going to be exactly. You know, on that final thing of what what they'll be allowed and determined, so. But I was just pointing out, we have some of the, again, there's just kind of these scattered. Scattered barbecue dining area, fire lounge, you know, areas scattered throughout the project is for, again, personal use by, they don't have to just go to one area. You know, they're scattered throughout the development. Right as you drive in, you come into the main entrance, which is the clubhouse. And again, just lots of different places that they'll probably be able to use this for the people that live there. You got the pool and the spa area. You got a volleyball court, you got splash pads, fence. They got bocce courts and play areas. Again, these are just, you know, a lot of amenity for. For the area compared to what what we're usually seeing, so that's we very appreciative of that. With all the extra, they even have a dog park run up here in the top right-hand corner, you can see. Just taking care of a lot of those those different varieties of what people might want and need within that. So. Scroll on, here's here's what the typical three-story apartment unit will look like, balconies kind of built into them. They're under the height limit on all their buildings. Just in case I was a question, you can see they put the height on there at thirty-nine feet. We use it, we do allow for forty-two feet in our multifamily developments. Again, different angles. Now, again, the apartment units. Here are the finishes they'll be using with the stuccos. Fiber board, stone, etc., that you can see in the colors. The railings, the windows, etc. I'm pretty sure these are the. Townhome units. Is that correct? Just give me a nod if. Yeah, so these this particular picture off on the left-hand side is what the the townhome is, so you'll enter from the. Street sides of will be the front doors, the backs will be the garages that you'll drive into. Which again, makes it more personable on the street facade. Instead of just seeing the backs of of units, you know, to that extent, so.
Will all the traffic flow onto Bella Vista? Is that the way I'm seeing that site plan?
No, right now, if you've been down in the area, you'll see eleven hundred east is being constructed. History on this particular entire development. Required that eleven hundred east, you know, that's why Cactus Drive is being done and it's being pushed to the east. And then traffic can go up to the north. Out out at eleven hundred east. Again, if you drive down there, you'll see all the pipe works being put in, etc., and they'll be laying curb and gutter and asphalt within the next, what would you say, John, month? Within the next month, that street will be being, you know, again, all the top finishes will be on. They are limited right now in those triplexes that are being built on the south side of that. They can, they only get thirty dwelling units and that road has to be in, it goes to eleven hundred east, so. So you can see they've added three, three entrances, exits, you know, as it pertains to this particular unit, especially this one at the far east. You know, was important. They, you know, just to give you again, a little more history on, this went through a general, a proposed general plan amendment. To go to the high density and take it out of medium-high density. And that was denied and because, you know, basically the council was hesitant to give out the high density without seeing what the project is, but we don't want to show the project in case. They approve it and then the project doesn't go through, we're kind of hung with the higher higher density. So the feedback I kind of got from the council is though they'd rather just see the project and see whether they want to give them increased credits. You know, on it and if it's a decent project, then they'll they'll look at the density, you know, in that way and this planning commission can. You know, reserve the same right to do so. That's why I just put in there that they've they've added, they're probably three times the requirement on the recreational area than what's required. And so that amongst all the, you know, and there's other things that they're just adding to this that kind of give them some little. You know, thing, I think bonus points, so to speak, that that could be used in the way of extra credit on that, so.
So Drew, on the pools and the splash pad, the the ordinance also addresses those in multifamily and. The applicant should just be aware that they're they're by ordinance prohibited unless unless approved by the city council. After consideration of the consumptive effect of those uses on potable water supplies.
Who wrote that ordinance anyway? Man, he was really.
It started at sixteen pages, but then it got cut down to four.
No, you didn't answer my question, voice from I said, who did write that? Oh.
City council.
Okay. So anyway, the the council still has that that liberty to approve what they want, especially when it comes to the, you know, the water and. So so we'll we'll take that before them and. Or, you know, you're gonna make a recommendation one way or the other. For or against and then they'll they'll have their opportunity to to vet it out as well. Now, do you have any questions for me? That's kind of, we've gone through all the exhibits on this project. Again, bottom line is it's two hundred dwelling units in the form of townhomes, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, sufficient parking. But yet still a lot of open open area. I didn't even throw in the driveways as even more parking. You know, as it comes down to it, they meet it in all the all the parking stalls and the garages, so there's even plus the extra ninety-one. Plus, you could have, you know, you could just say one out of every three on the driving driveways could be a utilized, so again, there's. Well, then enough sufficient parking on on the project. Which is one of the biggest things I look at right off. Anybody who's brought a townhome project in front of my desk knows I beat people up on parking and appreciate all that's been put into this one. So I didn't have to beat them up. Are there any any other questions I can answer for you on?
I have one, Commissioner Hanson, you remember Van, our previous commissioner and with what he did for work, he would always ask about the landscaping. When we have a project like this that shows a ton of trees in here, is there a requirement to? If it's a if it's a mature tree that they're putting in, I don't know the right word for it in that that line of work, but it's not a. A brand-new tree that's going to take fifteen years to grow to that size or whatever. He used to always ask about that. Is that something that we do or do we just? Because it looks a heck of a lot better with mature trees as opposed to sticks that they're starting out with this many. So I'm just curious if that's something that we require people or if that's noted or?
No, we've never never done that since I've been here, you know, now they did propose a lot of palm trees and I told them back off on the palm trees because those guys are. Some of the biggest water drinkers that are on this earth. And they're more than willing to do that. I think they just wanted to have them basically here in the in the entrance. You know, these five will probably hopefully just be the only palm trees. That are in the project because they are bad water consumers and but they did want to have a few of them and so. But they did back off on having a lot of palm trees, so.
All right.
But we'll have them work with our our parks department and our tree, is it the tree committee? Thad that we call that.
We have a shade tree committee.
Yeah.
And.
It talks about the best ones, right?
Palm trees are known to be desert adapted. Some of the big shade trees actually will will use a lot more water than palm trees because they aspire more through their through their leaves and nodes, but. In the landscape ordinance, the original draft proposed a size requirement. To basically. The the challenge was we wanted to, we had considered the requirement of tree planting. In replacement of lawn reduction so that we still have canopy and shade and green. And part of the requirement was a caliper requirement. But there was a lot of feedback from the industry that said, you know, sometimes you can't get the right caliper sizes, so you're saying we can't get approval unless we can produce that and so the. City council resolved that by removing any requirement on on size, just sharing that in response to your question, so. We haven't historically had a requirement and the recent ordinance those passed considered the idea, but also removed it just. For concerns about the impact on on an application based on a nursery supply issue.
Yeah. Perfect. Commissioners, any questions for staff? This is a public meeting. We'll open that in just a second, but do you have any preliminary questions for? Staff to address on this particular project? What we'll do at this time is open this up to a public hearing. For those of you in the chamber that would like to speak on this item, please come up to the microphone and state your name so we have that on the record. And the purpose of the public hearing in our meeting is to have your questions, comments, concerns, put on the record. It's not necessarily to, we might not have the answer. We can try to get it for you if we can here. It's not to kind of lobby. Arguments back and forth between us as commissioners. We want to give you the opportunity to get it on the record so city council can see this for their review of the project and the minutes from the meeting. And we'll go from there. So does anybody here want to speak on this particular item? Please come forward and state your name. That is correct. There, this was open online as well. There was no public comments submitted to us prior to this meeting, so. It does not look like there's anybody here in the chamber that would like to speak. So I'll look for a motion, Commissioners, to close the public hearing.
This is Commissioner Mitchell. I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Shield, I second.
I've got a first and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the public meeting, public hearing portion is closed. Commissioners, I'll open the floor to you for any comments to staff or possibly the applicant if we need to ask additional questions. I know I don't have any. Commissioners, is there any here? If not, I'll look for a motion on this item. Nothing I have to say, Commissioners, I'm still kind of in shock about this this item, but I do like this project, so I happy to entertain a motion.
This, so this is Commissioner Anderson. I just I just want to say is that. I think this is the better way to have done it rather than just blindly, you know, raising the the density here because this way they. They actually meet the requirements by by using, you know, applying the bonus density, which is already in the code. Plus, we get to see an idea of what what we're looking for, whereas before we were. Um, plus we get to see an idea of what, what we're looking for, whereas before we were trying to just. You know, vote in a vacuum, so I think this is a better way to, to do it.
Absolutely. Agreed.
This is Commissioner Anderson, I'll make a motion to approve Z dash twenty-two dash eleven. Request to approve the design and use of an already zoned planned unit development residential. Partial of thirteen point seven seven acres located approximately the northeast corner of Bella Vista Drive and Desert Cactus Drive. With the two findings and twelve conditions as outlined by staff and Senate City Council. Actually, I will add one condition on here, condition thirteen, just that per. For the new, uh, water ordinance that the. Way they've got listed pools, spas, splash pad. Um, needs to be, as it currently sits, is not allowed, needs to be reviewed by city council to be approved.
Commissioner Tupoe, I second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Anderson, I've got a second by Commissioner Tupoe. Individual voting, Commissioner Tupoe.
Aye.
Sheil?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
I'm Hanson, I'm an aye as well. Motion five A passes, we'll send that to city council with our recommendation for approval. Uh, thank you guys for attending, appreciate it, like the project. We'll go to item number six A, this is a public hearing as well for consideration to approve a conditional use permit. In an industrial zone, C dash twenty-two dash oh four. Located at thirteen sixty-three East Washington Dam Road. The applicant is Lori Pregner and Chris Long. I'll turn the time over to staff for their report.
Thank you commissioners, the applicant states is requesting the planning commission approval for a non-listed use within the industrial zones. The site at this particular application is zoned heavy industrial, the I two zoning designation. Neither the permitted uses or conditional uses list a spa or health wellness type of use in any of the industrial, um, categories. Fortunately, within this, this particular zoning district, subsection D of title nine eleven dash two. Has an option giving for the offering as stated in the, in, in the report, and I'll just read it. Other uses not listed as permitted or conditional in other zones. Determined by the planning commission to be compatible and in harmony with the character intent of these zones. According to their designation approval development plans. This option allows for certain requests to be applied for and considered by the planning commission for a possible approval. Staffs reviewed the request and the zoning regulations as outlined, has determined that the request for a special. Commission approval for this type of use at this particular location. Is the only option for this applicant to take place at this property. Staff therefore would like to recommend. Um, and wishes to recommend to the planning commission to approve the request, allowing for a spa health wellness. Facility business to be located at thirteen sixty-three East Washington Dam Road. And that's based on the findings subject to the conditions in your report. Again, if you're familiar with the new BMW repair business on Washington Dam Road. That's what this is, I'll bring it up in a minute, but, um. The applicant is going to utilize this particular, uh, portion, I think, which would be the west end of the building. Uh, for this particular spa wellness, um, business, so. Sorry that the pictures are loaded sideways, but, um. If you can kind of, our public works is right, right next door to this on the left-hand side, if you know where our public works building is and. It's a particular, particular site plan. And again, public works is right here, I'm bouncing the cursor. Uh, A trust is right across the street over here. Just to give you some familiarity there. And I'll kind of. Get us there on the map, but I'll be glad to answer any questions that the commission might have as it relates to this. Again, we've, we've probably approved a half dozen, uh, more of these recreational type things, um. The guy who does ninja in the area has a ninja shop down in this area. You know, that we have, we have another company that does gymnastics just around the corner from this and that subdivision above them. We've allowed a few different uses like that. To come into that industrial area, so. You know, I apologize because my. This building's so new. Within the next couple of months, I'll have the new aerials, but. It, it's right here on this location, then I don't even, I'm afraid if I go to Google, I'm going to have the same.
Commissioners, while Drew's looking for that, do you have any questions initially for him on this particular item? Drew, with the other that we've approved in, uh, in this, in this zoning with industrial, have we had any issues with them from the city? I know this is a different type, but. Like, I know the gymnastics is highly successful, I think there was a nail salon and hair, but I think that was in a fire. Like, but the others, we haven't had any issues.
We haven't had any issues with them, no, not at this point, so.
Hey, Cody, is your use an I two or an I one?
Light industrial, I don't.
Well, that'd be an I one, correct?
What's that?
I mean, my, my question is, in the area, how many I two users are there opposed to I ones? Is that?
Well, let's.
Is that a stupid question?
No, because I can kind of, I'm going to back out here a little bit and kind of show you. I'll pull up the zoning map here and. I two, this building right up here where my cursor is, is the gymnast. The lady we gave the air, uh, the eyelash massages right here across the street from there in I two. The, um, ninja guy is on I two because he's out on the street, so actually most of them are in the, the I two, not even the I one.
Right.
So.
And that's my question is, is do we have a lot of I two users that are requiring only that zone that wouldn't go in I two, I one?
I'm not sure I understand the question, but the reason they picked this spot is because.
Well, I two is, is a little more industrial, correct?
Right, yeah.
So that's my question, do we have heavy industrial out there or more light industrial?
I would say the majority of all my industrial uses are light industrial, even though they may be in an I two. A lot of them are still I one users.
There's a lot of residential going in above this, a lot.
Well, yeah, I mean, beyond it, yeah.
What were you saying, Drew? You were saying the reason they picked this particular spot and then?
Um, because they're, they're related. They didn't have to go too far. He's given up part of the shop.
That makes sense.
For, for, for her businesses, easiest way to say it, so.
For me, commissioners, it's interesting, I, ordinarily, for all of them, I wouldn't have suggested that's what we do, but they seem to work. They seem to work very well, and, and so there's no reason to.
Rent for them.
Yeah. But I would have never thought, now let's do this and then, you know, go back five or six, ten years and, and start looking at, but they work and I, I don't have a problem, I don't have a problem with this one either for me, so that's. Any questions for staff before we open it up to a public hearing?
Just a quick thought, I would think, uh, if it was an outdoor. Setting, then you might see more conflict with the heavy industrial, just because of what's generated, but I think an indoor facility. Probably see minimal interference.
Yeah. At this time, I'll go ahead and open this to the public hearing, is there anybody here that would like to speak to this particular item? Please come forward and state your name for the record. It does not look like anybody would like to speak to this item, I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing.
This sheil, I propose we close this public hearing.
So Anderson, I second.
Got a first and a second to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed, commissioners, I'll open the floor again for any questions, either for the staff or the applicant if necessary. And if there are no questions, I'll look for a motion on this item.
This is Commissioner Anderson, I, I think it's a good use of space there, um. I think the only issue I ever see with putting commercial and industrial is, you don't have as much parking as you would in commercial. You know, like the gymnastics place, for example, people park clear down the street and halfway out to Washington Dam Road. But with that said, there's probably nothing else you could do in this space either, so I think it's a good use of space.
Please let me know if you see that, because they, it was part of their conditions, they're not supposed to be doing that.
My daughter goes to gymnastics there.
You better tell the owners, they promised me a hundred plus times, they would not be parking in those streets, they would. Cause everything was drop off and pick up, so.
Called you on a cell phone.
Appreciate that, Commissioner Anderson.
Alright, I look for a motion on item number six A.
This sheil, I'd recommend that the planning commission approve the request allowing for a spa health wellness facility business to be located at. Thirteen sixty-three East Washington Dam Road, based on the. Five findings and four conditions.
This Commissioner Tupoe, I second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Sheil, I have a second by Commissioner Tupoe, individual voting, Commissioner Tupoe.
Aye.
Sheil?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
I'm Hanson, I'm an aye as well. Item number six A passes, we'll sit, I'm sorry, passes for recommendation to city council for approval. We'll move to item number seven A, this is a. Public hearing as well for consideration to approve a conditional use permit for a medical office building, C dash twenty-two dash oh six. Located approximately Brio Parkway and Buena Vista Boulevard. The applicant is Travis Davis and Hughes General Contractors, turn the time over to Drew or staff for the report.
Oh my goodness. Thank you commissioners, uh, state of the applicant's request and approval of a conditional use permit to develop a medical office complex. Uh, the applicant is wishing to develop approximately four point nine six acres into a medical office at this location. It's proposed to be roughly, and again, my numbers are off because we have different conflicting, and I'm going to have the applicant can come up. I think our worst case scenario is it's thirteen, roughly thirteen thousand square foot floor, and there's three of them. Because in their write-up, they put it was roughly forty thousand, so that's what I'm going to go with. If it's less than that, then hooray, um, but we're going to base it on roughly forty thousand square foot of, of medical office space. Uh, the building height is fifty-five feet. Um, which is in excess of the allowable height for building in commercial zones, which is a maximum of forty-five feet. But do not despair, the applicant has already gone before the city council and obtained a height waiver. Of up to fifty-four feet, six inches, and that was done a month or so ago. The conditional use, uh, being sought due to the requirements found in the commercial zoning regulations. Saying that any commercial and professional administrative uses. Development that is over five thousand square feet in size must obtain a conditional use permit from the planning commission. Staff has reviewed the proposed project, finds that it meets the intent of the commercial and professional administrative use regulations is found in your zoning regulations. The proposed prod, project is also very well designed and has more than sufficient parking area. Again, at forty thousand square feet, the requirement is one hundred and sixty. They have upwards of two hundred plus, I just went to, oh, at one sixty and still many stalls to count, so I'm not concerned about, about the parking in this. You also notice down here off of Buena Vista Drive, there's a parking lot. That one will be kind of designated for their employees to use. So that their customers can use the main parking lot and get in and out of the building easier, so. Uh, you see the circular drive that they can come, drop off. Let people walk in, then they can go park, but again, if you're wondering what the parking lot down below is, that's. Going to be kind of designated specifically for employee parking. So again, sufficient parking for the project. Uh, the project's well designed and more than sufficient, as I stated for the parking, this will be an asset to the city and also a benefit. To the city and its citizens and the healthcare needs that are in our community. Staff would like to recommend that the planning commission approve C dash twenty-two dash zero six. Allowing for a medical office complex to be located at approximately sixty-seven fifty North Brio Parkway. I don't think that's sixty-seven fifty, I think it's supposed to be six fifty. Um, that's a misprint by me, uh, but also with the exhibits in your report is outlined. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that you, you might have on this particular project.
So are there existing homes in that cul-de-sac and?
I think so, if not, they will be within months, as fast as everything's building out. Um, but yeah, I can't go to this aerial, it's too far, too far, um. Too old, so, but I'm pretty sure that almost all this, this particular phase is built out right here.
Well, just, just on the left side, yeah.
Drew, if I heard you correctly, they were, they received a height waiver from the city council for up to fifty-four point six.
Yes.
And they're asking for fifty-five.
Well, whatever they were granted.
Okay, so it's, I mean, I'm like.
I'm, I'm going off of what the council, I think they gave them actually fifty-five or fifty-six feet.
Okay.
So, which was a, a little bit above of what they were, you know, we just want to make sure we're covered.
Okay.
It's three-story?
It's three-story, and then again, you can see that square box in the middle of the footprint. That's actually what's on top for the equipment, roof equipment will be up there, that's why it's being, I'll scroll down. That's why we needed the height and all. You can't really see it from these, so.
So the building is one foot six over the allowed.
Yes, and the remainder is four.
The rest of it is the screening to cover the air conditioner. In the middle.
And none of the elevations really show the screen because from this point, you know, from the parking, you won't see the, the screening up there, but it is part of the overall height of the building. That you can see if you're a little farther back or in a different elevation height. So. But this is considered one of those class A office buildings, so it's a little bit. Nicer than just the average office building, so they have higher ceilings in them. More open, you know, in glass areas, et cetera, so it is, it's, the class A is, you know, the nicest that you can get in, in office complexes, so that's what this one will be designed under.
Is this for a user or are they looking for tenants?
It's a user, there's doctors and stuff ready to come. Dixie Medical is what the company is and they're ready to move in. When the building's done, of course.
While you're thinking of additional questions, uh, commissioners, I'll open the public hearing portion of the meeting for this item, if there's anybody who'd like to. Speak to this item, please come forward and state your name for the record. And if you could, please try to limit your comments to three minutes and we'll, we'll try to do that, if you can't, we'll fight it out later, but yeah, try.
Dave Flagger. I got a hundred and fifty-foot backyard that faces this. And when we bought the property, it was approved, they promised us one level, charged us a premium price. And now it's three level and still a premium price. And you're going to have parking in back of a spire fence, but is that ever going to change or that going to be permanent? Because. It said on that last meeting that there was another proposed building going in next to this one. My lot is that diamond shaped one up at the top. That faces, that hundred and fifty-foot span that faces down in the parking lot. And that's where the future buildings, they said was going in there last time. So is there anything that's going in after this is approved? Or are we going to be?
We'll clarify that, that's okay. You must be the applicant?
No, I just was going to help him, I'm his, I'm his neighbor.
Perfect.
I had a good talk with these guys for the last half hour or so, and they're going to talk about things, I talked about some of the concerns, it's just going to be a parking lot. So we're going to talk about the trees and the lights, that's what we're going to be able to talk about, rather than another building, because we know it's not, there's not another building, it's just going to be parking lot.
Do you mind, do you mind stating your name for the record and then saying that? Yeah, do you mind telling Barry so everyone can hear you, so then that way we can, everyone can hear, maybe there's some other.
Very sorry, I'm just helping him because I found out some things before he, I didn't get a chance to talk to him.
No, I think it's really good, but what you were saying, I could hear, but I'm not sure everybody could hear, and there might be people that would help answer their questions as well.
No, and I, and I have. No, and I, and I have talked to, to Hughes and to the Dixie gentlemen. I'm sorry, I don't remember your names. And we are going to try to talk about a couple of concerns that we do have with the lighting and with maybe some tree placement in there. And they've agreed to talk to us and do things that we can present to you maybe a little bit different because there's some code things that you guys have. There's an entrance way. There's only one entrance. We're wondering how we can keep people from coming in after hours that cause some you know, SUVs and stuff, which we do get up above on Brio once in a while. So they have to call the police and stuff. We're trying to avoid those things. But the biggest thing is not having lights into their house and trees covering any view that they might have. And that's what we're discussing. There's a way to kind of work that out rather than the building itself at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have anything else on that?
Thank you.
So if we need more questions, we will, but they, they're going to come up and talk now. We're going to hear what they have to say about it and we'll go from there. Okay?
Thanks, perfect. I'm anticipating big things here. Okay, just don't forget to tell us your name.
Hello, Cecilia Millman. I'm a resident of Brio. I'm right at, I'm right at the end of the cul-de-sac, this area right here. My question is, do you know what they're going to do here? Are they going to put a block wall?
We'll ask the applicant. There should be, but we'll ask the applicant. Well, I don't think you can reach, but Drew, can you see where she's at? So you could show.
Yeah, she's in this lot right here where my cursor is going.
Yeah, so to the right.
Remain open, doesn't it, John? It, does this passageway have to remain open? There's an easement in there, so they won't be able to block.
And then right.
People can walk through there, right off of Brio Parkway. That's not going to be closed off at all?
No, because it's an easement of Stormbray. Lots of things. Lots of utilities running through there. We can't block it off.
Thank you.
Cecilia, I thought you were pointing to something else. Did you get your question answered?
She was pointing at her house.
That's what I thought. And I was like, well.
She was pointing at this easement here that's hatched out.
We live, we live here.
Right.
I know this is the employees' parking. Is this going to be a, like a pathway here?
Perfect. Okay. I just want to make sure. I, I saw your pencil somewhere else. I want to make sure you had your question answered. Okay.
It's not a vehicle pathway, correct?
Trucks could utilize it for utility work.
Or utility work only.
Maintenance.
Yes, sir.
I am Richard Dubois. I am on six ninety-four Via Azul. And so my property is at the corner of their parking lot. I have two issues which have been already voiced. Number one, it's the elevation of the building. Uh, I am opposed to the variance that's been approved or recommended. I'm not sure if it's approved yet. And, and the lighting ordinance, um, it's going to light up the backyards of all the homes on Via Azul. And for that reason, I, uh, I am opposed to their plan for a three-story building.
Thank you, Richard. It's my understanding as well, Richard, just your, your first question is that the height waiver has been approved by city council. That's not something that's been, been proposed. It was approved at a previous meeting. Uh, maybe the, maybe the date was mentioned, but how long ago was it?
Most of them were here at that meeting.
Last week.
Oh, last.
No, it's, it was.
Three weeks.
Three weeks ago. It's almost been.
Yeah, I wasn't here. Okay. Um, and then we'll address lighting because that's something that always comes up. I'll, I'll ask some questions about that. Anybody else like to speak to this particular item? Michelle? Nothing? All right.
It, it, the, the issue is elevation. A, a three-story building doesn't have to go. What was the amount of, what was the square, what was the height? Fifty-five, fifty-six? It doesn't have to, you can still have a three-story building. It does not have to be fifty-six feet in elevation.
Well, yeah, the, the, the total building is not fifty-five feet. The total building's probably on.
Forty-four foot six.
Forty-four, thirty, yeah, thirty-six to forty-four. Then there's a
Air conditioner.
Top area that has equipment up there, air conditioning and coolers, things like that. They need to be behind a parapet wall and that's what the elevation is.
And the, the reason that they went before, so it, it was already, the reason they went for a height waiver is that to build this building structurally, they have to have this height. They, they can't do it any shorter. But they, they asked for eighteen inches in height waiver and then the remainder is the air conditioning screen that's in, up on top.
Now, the topography of the lot uh, from street to the back wall where the resident, residential homes are. Uh, it's not a flat, correct? What's the grading on the lot?
Can we have the applicant come up here? I, I actually had a question about that.
Before the applicant speaks, Richard, do you have any other questions? And we'll try to hit them all at once. How's that? I know lighting is something we're going to ask about.
And elevation.
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 With regards to the height of the building, I don't think it's necessary. This, it's already been approved. There isn't anything this meeting is going to change that or any other additional meetings as well. It was approved by city council. But the other questions, we can try to address. But the height of the building is the height of the building. Please remember to state your name for the record. Thank you.
Travis Davis with Hughes General Contractors. The staff has done a really good job to explain the intent and the overall layout of the project. And we appreciate the public comment. Um, it's helpful for us to get an understanding on how to react and create a building that is, can, can meet everybody's needs. Uh, from the very beginning, we've been concerned with the layout and how it would affect the neighbors. That's why we pushed the building as far away from all of the residences we possibly could, if you go to the site plan. You know, we pushed it down to that corner and yeah, right there. And then even taking some of the parking and pushing it on where it's a little difficult for us to access on the other side of that drainage canal. Uh, it's a little discontiguous, but again, it helped push the building farther away from the residents. And the functionality to get, to do a class A office building, you know, something that the neighborhood can be proud of, that it's a, it's a long-lasting, high-quality facility. Um, class A rent rates require, you know, glass and daylighting and taller ceiling heights. And so that's what we've incorporated into this. Um, and then also it creates a smaller footprint to do three stories. And so we're not pushing up, again, closer to the residences. And with the three stories, and then there's, like I said, there's a twenty-two foot drop from the, the north end of the site down to the south. Um, so that's, you know, pretty significant and, um. What's the drop between their backyards and your, your parking lot? Is it a drop? It varies as you go up the hill. But worst, best case, worst case, the lowest drop elevation is how many feet? About level. If you go to that site plan that has the contours on it. Set up. Uh, keep going. Is that it? Yeah. Not that one. Well, it's got contours on it, so. There's one that had across the site. Is it farther down then? I think it's farther down. Okay, so it's way down by the. I think it's maybe the last one. This one? Right. Oh, there we go. Yeah, that one. Sorry, I keep, I don't know why I keep hitting that thing button. Just glad you're driving and not me. Oh, man. Okay, we're going to get it this time. Okay, now, right here, I need to. Yeah, so if you can see those contours, that represents a foot of fall. So that kind of diamond-shaped lot at the end of the cul-de-sac, if you project straight over, that would be about roughly the floor elevation of the building. So you're pretty level here. Uh huh. And then you fall. That we climb, it climbs as you go up the page. You're above them? No, the grade climbs above them. So they're above you when you get to this corner? Yes.
So it looks like lot, lot five sixty-two is about thirty feet above the floor of your, of the building. Roughly, from what it looks like. So from now, the building would be about fourteen feet tall relative to the person standing on lot five sixty-two.
Yeah. So five seventy-one seen all forty-seven feet of your building? Yes. And these guys will see fifteen feet of it.
With regards to what they see, can you address the, I know that the city has an ordinance about lighting, but can you? Um, we've heard it before, but can you express what you guys have gone through on your planning? To avoid lighting up their backyards as they, as somebody mentioned?
Yeah, absolutely. In fact, I submitted another version that had a photometric on it as well as a different, um, architectural look to the building. The, the geometry was the same, but there was just a different look. I don't know if you got that one, but the photometric study we did is we can actually um, get the light fixture that we're proposing to put in, digitally model it on its light distribution and light spread. And do the candle footprint onto the site. And that's what we were showing. So we can add the property line. We actually have shielding devices on the lights themselves that will basically stop the light at the property line. Um, we've had, done another project, a medical office building in St. George, had the exact same concerns from the citizens of the lighting. And we staged the lighting so that farther away from the building, it turned off sooner. And then it was on a timer. And then as it got closer to the building, it would, it would, the lights would stay on longer. Um, another thing that we can do, a, and again, we're trying to navigate city ordinance on this as well because the city ordinance requires the lighting. Um, another thing we could do is the, I believe the wall along the residences is six feet tall and then there's a rock wall that's another four or five feet tall. So we could do shorter light fixtures. So they would come maybe to the top of the wall. So the residences, and then screen, oops, and then screen the lighting fixture from there. So the residences wouldn't even see anything. That would only be along the, this upper portion, right? But down here, you'd have to. Yep, down there it would gradually. The protected. The shrouds on the lights, yeah.
What are the hours of operation that are expected? Standard eight to five, nine to five?
Standard office hours and not we, not weekends. There, there will be some exceptions, but principally the, those are the hours.
All right.
Um, and I would like to address, and you can kind of see it's hatched. There, the future, yes. Uh, we put that in there because that is contemplated. Um, that'd be a ten thousand square foot footprint, two-story maximum height there. And again, we've pushed it as far away from the residents as we can. Uh, it's, it's master planned that way. I don't know that we'll ever build it. Um, just because we need the parking that's there, but it is a consideration.
Okay.
And just to note, they'd have to come back and do a conditional use permit for that as well at a future date if they do decide to do that, so. The other, the other project that we did, we also had, we put trees, and we actually went out of our way to put a lot of trees as a buffer between the parking lot and the residences on the previous project. And, uh, some of the residences went, yeah, we don't want a tree there. We want it over here. So we said, okay, and we moved it over. And the city was flexible with us on their landscaping ordinance. Allowed us to accommodate kind of the desires of the neighbors there. And if this case, if the neighbors don't want trees, we would be willing to accommodate that. But again, we'd have to adapt the city ordinance accordingly.
You have something in place that, what does the line of communication look like between you and the neighbors? Is it you and one person or is there just people calling you randomly?
One person just a few minutes before I still up here, so.
Like, is there a, some sort of coordinated effort by the neighbors? Neighbors can shake their head no or yes, or is it kind of random?
Spokes, spokesperson? He's speaking.
Well, Barry, because he's not listening, he's now the guy. So everybody go to Barry. And dang it, Barry heard me. Uh, Barry, all we were saying, sorry to interrupt, um, all we were, we were wondering if there's an open line of communication between the developer and the neighbors and what does that look like? And everybody looked at you. So it sounds like you're the guy. Do you live over there, correct?
I do.
Okay, because we want to. No, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You're asking me if there was an old-time thing?
No, if there's a, a.
Open, open line.
An open line of communication between the neighbors and the developer because it sounds to me like the developer is more than willing and able to do everything they can to appease the neighbors with lighting and trees and all these different things.
At this point, I think they have been very open-minded to us. And so I think that, that's why I was trying to dialogue before we got to this point. So we wouldn't have to have the whole discussion right here that they would say. So I, I do think that they're very open to maybe where they put some of the trees, keeping in ordinances, but also there's some things you guys have to understand is that people don't want to lose their whole vista. They, I mean, people paid a lot of money to have some type of view. And now that view would be completely gone.
Mm-hmm.
And that's not necessarily their fault. But they bought the property where they were told by the previous owner of that land what it was, what it was for. And then that got changed and then it got changed again. So you can understand maybe the frustration on people's parts.
A hundred percent.
They feel like they were lied to multiple times.
If the city was, if the city was obligated for all the view promises made by realtors, we would, we would have a much different looking city. And so I wish, I wish we could regulate that.
Anything, just so you know.
Yeah, and, and I'm not saying you are. The other challenge is there's still another lot next to this that in theory could also put some uh, could possess a building someday. And so.
No, wait, okay, so I, I, I don't, I don't see that. Let's bring that up again.
Same lot, different, I mean.
No, there isn't.
No, there's not. There was a thought process of splitting that. Can we go back to the original with the houses that were there?
I thought Travis just mentioned that. You just mentioned a possible.
Ten thousand.
No, yeah, but that's in the same parking area. It's not.
Yeah, it's not a different lot, but it's.
Necessarily closer to the houses. It's on the side, so.
We're just trying to talk about people have a knowledge of what's potentially in their future. And, and if you're here, we're going to let you know that.
And in talking to the, the agents of the building, you know, that are building the building, you know, they want it out here, even though they haven't a hundred percent decided that's what they want to do. That's what I've been told.
Here, here is.
Am I, am I correct in that?
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, they just wanted to hear. They haven't decided whether they're going to go with it or not. But that goes on that side over there. I'm talking about the backing where the houses are. Putting a bunch of trees in front of their back. So then they're just looking at trees, which they don't necessarily want to be able to do. They want to still see the vista because because of where you're putting the building and it is lower than the houses, they might be able to see over that.
Here is my point, Barry, is making sure that what you have here is a developer that's willing to work with the residents, which we don't see all the time. That's not a hundred percent guarantee. And so you have one here.
Our last developer.
Right. And I, well, yeah. And I wanted to make sure that there's a line of communication between you and the neighbors with a willing and able developer to get the best thing you guys can. Because there, there's certainly things that, when it comes to a view, as an example, that is a very sticky subject because everybody wants to protect their view. The problem is the law doesn't do anything to protect it. So there are developers that say, hey, sorry, we're going to build this and it's going to meet city standards and you're kind of out of luck. We don't want that. So what I, all I was trying to say is I encourage you to keep the line of communication open with a developer that's willing and able and talking here to us at this meeting. Um, not making commitments, but saying they're willing to work with the residents. We don't see that. And so I want to make sure you understand what a.
And so far, that's a good thing. And I, and I say, I would say to the city council and everybody that we need to have expectations that developers coming in are going to actually listen and talk to people. And not just say, well, they can just do whatever they want to do. I think that's a bad precedent to send in as growth of a city. Is anybody can come in and just kind of work their way around because they got some bucks, right? They have to be careful with that.
Well, I, I'm going to stand up for the city here. If that doesn't happen, we have.
He just told me that most developers don't do that.
Just a minute, let me finish. We have a commission full of citizens. Then we have a council full of citizens. The whole representative purpose of this form of government is to have the citizens that sit at these layers. And so the developers don't get to work around those. They, they come through. We don't require the developers talk and, and try to address citizen concerns. They have to address the representative concerns of these two bodies. Most, many developers like this one will try and address citizen concerns in the meeting. They'll have meetings outside of this meeting and try and do it. But if there's, if there's a suggestion in your comment that that's happening, I, I.
No, I know, you, you misunderstood me. So let me finish. They've been great. I've had a great conversation with these. I'm happy for this. This is good. We've had bad experiences before and what I thought you said, Jason, if I may, is you said, well, those developers don't have to even talk to you guys. They don't care. So you as my representatives here and our city council here that represents us, we expect you to take in consideration the feelings of, of your citizens with that case. So you said like, well, it's probably not going to happen. You're lucky you got somebody that's nice. But we should set expectations that we need to work all together with the concerns of people. I think it's a great building. I like it. I do live right there. That does, it is going to affect me. As I learn more about it, I like a lot about it. I'm just glad that they're willing to work. And that's, I being positive here. I, you, you seem thad to be taking everything I say is this big fighter negative and don't, don't take that at all with my saying.
But if you're going to insinuate that this city allows people to work around the process, I will stand up.
Well, when I say work around the process, he said. Well, when I say work around the process, he said, I'm lucky that they're willing to talk to the neighbors. So I'm saying, well, I hope that we have the expectations that the neighbors and stuff are in consideration with the decisions you make. That's all I was saying. I wasn't saying you were doing backyard deals or anything. I think you're taking too much as an attorney.
I'll tell, I'll tell you why.
He is right that you're lucky they'll talk with you. A developer could submit an application that says, we don't care about the neighbors views, but we think state zoning law allows us to do this. And it could be denied and then they could appeal and a district court could put it into place. And so.
Maybe.
We are lucky. We are lucky that we have a commission and council that will talk with you. Um, I agree with him.
I like, all I. I agree with you. I, I, I just think you're taking what I'm saying too deep and maybe going in that direction is.
I, I want to make sure I feel this, I feel like you do about what you're saying to Thad. I feel like you're saying that to me. What I'm saying as a citizen, when I have people come here and I've been doing this for four years now, I'm no expert, but I've got four years sitting here. I have to in my mind balance out people's feelings and the law ultimately. And the way that zoning and things are done in the city, and I'm not an expert on that. Thad certainly is and the, the staff is. And they're very much like this. Okay. So if I have a view and somebody wants to come in and develop behind me and that view goes away, it's like this. So what I'm, I'll have them suggesting and it, it's, it wasn't sharp or any, and I hope it wasn't taken that way. I don't think it should have been.
Yeah.
Is that we have a chance to make it more like this in your favor. And I want you to understand.
We've had a great conversation, so I don't know how.
That's all it was. I don't know how this ended up going down to left field, but all we're trying to do is help you as the neighbors, say, hey, there's a guy here trying to help you. And does he have to? Absolutely not. So it's, it's a gift. We're trying to help you understand the magnitude of what we're seeing, what we're hearing from our point of view. Um, we don't always hear that because legally they don't, they don't have to. And you need to understand that. It would be a mistake if you walked out of here believing that.
Well, and I understand that. That's why I bring in the other part where we don't just decide we're, we're all about growth and everything and with everything that we decide. There's, there is a, a element of living in the community. And I don't want it to be always just one-sided. We do want to be able to hear. That's why people run for office. That's why people say they want to do things and they're going to help us and they're going to listen to us, right? And then sometimes they go, well, we really don't have to because of this rule. I would hope that we would just look at everything at all points of view. And I think there has been that point of view here. I get that. The previous owner of the land promised a lot of things, charged a lot of money for certain things and then went the opposite. And that's where the, the negative is coming from is the people that paid thousands of dollars for this, to have the privilege of having this view. And then, oh, by the way, we're not keeping that, right? And it's not their fault. I didn't blame these gentlemen, Hughes or the people. They had nothing to do with it.
Well, there's your answer.
So that's why there's some sad things going on because they feel like maybe they should get their money back from other, and that's a whole different ballgame. I get that. But I think they've been very great in conversation today. So I, that's where I want to go to.
But I applaud you guys, Travis, honestly. Yeah. Awesome. Thanks Barry. Appreciate it.
Okay. So I don't know the next step as far as that is concerned, what.
So Barry, this is, uh, if I can, before we go any further down the rabbit hole here, I, I wanted to answer a little bit of your question as far as trees here. So depending on what, what size of tree or whatever they plant, so that the parking lot is going to be, from the looks here, you've got like an eight to 10 foot rock retaining wall. And then you guys have probably got like a six foot privacy wall on your lot as well. Yeah. So what I'm, what I'm getting at is you've got about fifteen, sixteen feet from down where they're going to plant the tree to the first view plane in anybody, anybody's backyard. So unless they're going to plant like a 40 foot tall tree or something, most of these trees are not going to be blocking view anyways. You could probably have trees that, that, like I said, you've already got 16 feet before you even pass the fence line.
And, and they already.
Oh, that, that would be pretty easy to manage.
How we can still do the city stuff and maybe plan it different with trees that we do. We've already talked about that. So I think, I think we'll come up to something that makes everybody happy is from, is my understanding. I appreciate you bringing that up, but I, but I think that is. And, and I personally don't live right behind it. I'm about a few houses down, so I don't know what their view is exactly from their backyard, to be honest with you. But I do think they have their wall. And then it is down. So it is about fifteen.
It's about fifteen, sixteen feet. I'm looking at the topography right here. It's on the, the drawing he's got.
So yeah, they can maybe put some trees that aren't going to go that high and stuff and that.
They can go 16 feet and they'll never even see a leaf.
We, we appreciate them talking to us and worked that out with them.
Awesome.
Yes.
So I think we had a great conversation and I do appreciate that. I want that on the record. I appreciate they're willing to work with us. Thanks.
Awesome. Oh boy, here we go. Another rabbit hole. Alright, hit me.
Richard Dubois again. I just clarification on the hours of operation of the facility. Is that, is the hours of operation part of the use permit that you're going to issue?
I don't believe that that is. Is that right Drew?
No, it isn't. Only if they want to agree to something. And in a medical facility, I wouldn't have them go eight to five because I know there's some doctors and I know that I appreciate a doctor that sometimes after five o'clock. I would say nine o'clock. I wouldn't be beyond nine o'clock because I don't think many doctors are awake after nine o'clock. Unless they're in the emergency room, then I'm just joking with them. But I would think that nine o'clock would be the worst you would see, see in this kind of scenario.
And is there going to be an insta-care in, in the facility? Cause I think it was previously stated that Saturdays and Sundays, it's not in use.
I heard that same thing. The applicant wanted to address that by chance? You will address it? I'm sorry. Okay, perfect.
He'll, he'll come up and talk to that.
And I'd like to know if there's an insta-care because that, that is, an insta-care type facility has expanded, uh, usage.
Okay.
Just your hours and insta-care, I guess.
Do you mind stating your name for the record? And, uh, you know, we're, uh, I'm one of the developers in the project. I want the, the people that live here to know that, you know, we, we are members of the community. We live here in St. George and, and Washington City. We're, um, you know, the, the particular physicians that work in this clinic, they're not outsiders. They're local docs. Chances are many people in this room have gone and seen them. And so, you know, these are people that have established, you know, very successful businesses in this town and, and provide a very, very, very um, needed service that's, that's, uh, in high demand right now and probably will be for a long time. So we're excited to work with the neighbors and, and, uh, you know, we really will do what we need to within limits to, to make them happy and, and good. We want to be neighborly. And that's extremely important to us. Um, as far as our hours goes, the general operation for the clinic is Monday through Friday. You know, there is some docs that, that stay late and do charts and stuff. I can't control that, but generally by seven, eight o'clock, it's pretty quiet. And, you know, weekends, sometimes, um, patients have to be seen. We will accommodate to the best we can. And, uh, but it's not going to be a heavy clinic base on the weekends. As far as insta-care goes, you know, we're not going to be like an ER type situation where people are going to come in, ambulances are going to be coming and going. That is not the facility. That's what the hospital's for. You know, so if we do see patients after hours or on the weekends, it'll be on an emergent basis. Um, and that's, that's it. As far as insta-care goes, we have no current plans for insta-care. But we obviously recognize the need and the shortage in the community. And so if we have to have patients seen on Saturday, we would do that, um, to get our patients in. Or, or potentially Sunday, but there's no plans for that. We don't have docs that, that can work those hours right now. Um, but there's obviously a shortage as well too, and we're trying to fill that need.
But that would be by appointment, right? It's not going to be like they're going to be sitting there on Saturday waiting for people to walk through the door.
Correct. Correct. Yeah. Yeah. Our, our plans are not to have an ER type facility where people can come in on an emergent basis. We do have a walk-in clinic. We currently have that. Patients come in as needed. Um, you know, and then if, if there's emergence issues, they go over to, we, we refer them over to the hospital.
Awesome. Commissioners, do you have any other questions for, is it Brent? Is that right? Again, I applaud you guys for your project. I think it's awesome. It's one of the better ones that I've seen. I appreciate the thought you've put into it to take into consideration the neighbors and things of that nature. So thank you. Um, I'll look for a motion. Is there anybody else in the chamber that would like to speak to this item? I'll look for a motion from the commissioners to close the public hearing.
Commissioner Tuppo, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
This is Commissioner Mitchell. I second.
I've got a first and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. Any other questions, staff? I'm sorry, questions, commissioners for staff? Or the applicant? Or comments?
There was a one, uh, question about the utility access, just along that line that I think maybe we should answer for the one resident. Not sure who will answer that. Whether there was going to be a wall or open or how that property line will be.
I remember hearing it was going to be a wall and that it would be something that people could walk on because a truck needs access to that area. That's the way I understood it to be. If it's something different.
No wall right now, I don't think is proposed to block it. Needs to remain open. Um, or again, utility maintenance, if anything happened that they could get through and. And it'll be acting like a trail. I'm glad someone did say that. That's kind of what it.
I was about to ask. I just figured they're going to do what they need to do, uh, to meet the city. Any other questions, commissioners? I'll look for a motion on item number seven A.
This is Commissioner Anderson. I'll make a motion to to approve C dash twenty-two dash O six, request for conditional use permit for commercial development along Buena Vista Boulevard with the the four findings and eight conditions per city council and also put a, a tenth condition, just that that they, uh, that they limit the height of trees along the, the back of some of these properties and also the height of lighting with, like you had recommended with, with shielding and so forth. Just taking in consideration the elevation of the, of the properties behind.
This is Commissioner Mitchell. I second that motion.
I've got a first by Commissioner Anderson. I've got a second by Commissioner Mitchell. Individual voting. Tuppo?
Aye.
Sheel?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
I'm Hanson. I'm an I as well. Item number seven A, uh, passes unanimously. We'll send that to, actually that's approved by the planning commission this evening. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number eight A is also a public hearing. This is consideration and recommendation to the city council for adding section nine dash eight A dash eight to the Washington city code for an internal accessory dwelling unit ordinance. And I'll turn the time over to Drew for staff report.
Thank you, commissioners. Uh, I think we talked about this a month or two ago. Um, we're going to be bringing this forward to you. And this is kind of the text we'd like to propose on amending and adding this, uh, subsection eight, both part of chapter nine, eight A and nine, eight B. Again, that's the nine, eight A is a residential agricultural, um, regulations. And then uh, nine, eight B is the single family residential, uh, chapters in that. So we'll be adding that subsection B with this particular language. Um, again, the state passed this last year, a house bill that turned every residentially zoned lot in state of Utah, north, south, east and west, and every city uh, has the opportunity to also have within it an internal accessory dwelling unit. Now with that, they also said the cities could put some limitations on, on some of that and they spelled those out themselves, bless their hearts. Uh, but they said, we also had to adopt it to, and be able to enforce it. We could just say, well, the state's code says this. They told us that we literally had to adopt an ordinance that had those that we so picked within those things that they gave us, uh, to use. So that's basically within your ordinance tonight. Again, I'll just briefly purpose and intent of the IADU is to provide for additional and affordable housing units located in residentially zoned districts within the city. And again, that's language from your state legislators there. Um, they also went and gave what a definition of, of those are. Um, an internal accessory dwelling unit is defined as a separate dwelling unit located entirely within the footprint of an owner occupied, single-family detached dwelling on a residentially zoned property. That is clearly incidental and accessory to the primary dwelling on the property. In addition to the standards described in the section, internal accessory dwelling units must adhere to the substan, or the standards described in the state code and what we have in our ordinance below. So that's kind of the beginning of the purpose and intent. Again, then you move down to B permitted zones, any residential zone, is that's what the state said it had to be. And then C gets into your general standards of what each of these, um, the, the things that we could put on there as, um, as criteria for that. So um, I'll just briefly go through them as quick as possible. And one, only one internal accessory. Well, I need to go back a little bit. Cause this is one of the main points. If you read in this number two on A two, that this I, IADU has to fit entirely within the current footprint of the home. So someone can't come in and they have room, they want to do an addition on the home. They come in and do an addition, then they turn it into a, an internal accessory dwelling unit would be not allowed. But if it's already there now, then that's what these are made for. So that we don't have this rush of people just doing additions, calling addition, then they turn it into an apartment. So glad that the state said within the footprint of the home right now. Okay. Moving on, general standards, only one is, uh, can be on any particular lot. So I can't make two or three of them, even though my footprint, you know, might be able to dictate that, but you can only have one. The proposed property location shall contain an already existing, single-family detached dwelling unit. So in other words, I can't build a new home with one built into it right now as my design. I'd have to build my home and then later come back in that same footprint and be able to do it, but wouldn't be able to do them simultaneously. Um, the proposed lot also has to be a minimum of six thousand square feet or greater in size. Number three, the lot where the IDU is located must maintain a single family appearance and character of the neighborhood. Internal accessory dwelling units shall be compatible in design and appearance with the primary dwelling on the property. It should not be located in detached structures connected by a breezeway. Exterior doors to the internal accessory dwelling shall not be located on the front of any primary dwelling. So in other words, if I have one and it looks like it's on the front, I can't put another door and have two front doors on my house. And one, it would have to be a door that come in off the side. Number four, the owner of the property must occupy the primary dwelling on the property. In other words, the owner of the property has to live there in one of those units. Internal accessory dwelling units shall meet all applicable health, fire, building codes. Okay. So they can't come in and, uh, if I have a home that doesn't meet the code, I can't pop one in there without bringing that particular, those items that are not in code compliant, they have to bring them into compliance. Number six, internal accessory dwelling units must contain complete cooking and bathroom facilities that are separate from the facilities located in the primary dwelling. A, the cooking facility must contain a sink and water faucet, capacity for food refrigeration and a permanent built-in stove top range or other similar device for cooking food. And B, the bathroom must have, it must have a bathroom facility with a sink and water faucet, a toilet and a shower and or tub combo. Seven, one additional off-street parking space shall be provided in addition to the required parking standards for the single-family residential lot. In other words, right now, every home has to have at least two parking stalls. One covered, one non-covered or both covered. But they have to have two. So if you do an accessory inter, internal accessory dwelling, you got to add a third one. You can't say it's going to be on the street. It has to be on the property. And we put a measurement on there just to make sure they weren't trying to, you know, they had a six foot space there and said, oh, well, all our renters will be someone with a Austin mini, you know, and that's the only thing that can fit. So, but it has to be a minimum of nine feet by nineteen feet. Sorry, I, that's nineteen inches long. It needs to be a little longer than that. I'll fix that. Should be nineteen feet long. Number eight, the total number of residents that reside in internal accessory dwelling unit may not exceed the number allowed for a single family dwelling. Our code allows for um, up to five unrelated people to call it a house, you know, a, a family. So then that would be what we would put a limit on is no more than five in one, in one of these internal accessory dwelling units. Number nine, here's an important one. If a garage or carport is converted, because again, it's within the footprint, remember? To an interior accessory dwelling unit, the property owner must provide the required off-street parking spaces somewhere else on the property that still complies with all the standards found within the title. So they was just have to, if they closed in a carport or something and took off that one, they have to provide what is still required in a single family residence. Number 10, internal accessory dwelling units are not permitted within a mobile home. If you wonder why you say that, well, do you guys know what a mobile home by definition is? It is a manufactured, but we don't call it that. Uh, that was built in from nineteen seventy-six or older. Those things are kind of outlawed everywhere within almost every city and county that I know of anymore. Um, but I was made aware today that if you want to go to Apple Valley, they'll still accept them. Don't know why, but they'll still. Don't know why, but they'll still accept them. Everybody else does not. Number eleven, the internal accessory dwelling must be rented for a minimum of thirty days or longer. In other words, these are not to be short-term vacation rental units. They have to have renters that are, you know, permanent type rent or scenarios. Number twelve, under no circumstances, and I just kind of covered that, shall they be used as a short-term nightly rental? That is prohibited. Thirteen, a city license for the renting of the internal accessory dwelling unit will be required. We also.
Drew, sorry, is it required even if it's a family member that rents it?
It is. We have to can't, because we can't determine that at the time. It's, we just have to treat them all the same. So required deed restriction has a condition of securing a building permit for construction and or a business license for an internal accessory dwelling unit being developed on a lot within an existing, single-family residence, the property owner shall record against the deed to the subject property, a deed restriction in the form provided by the city. Proof that such a deed restriction has been recorded shall be provided to the community development department prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy or business license for that internal accessory dwelling unit. And I'll have Thad and I work together on getting the deed restriction language. We already have something I think will work, but we'll have that provided for people to be able to use. I just didn't want to put it in the ordinance, in case we need to tweak it later down. D, there will be a penalty. Any person, firm, or corporation, whether as principal, agent, employee, or otherwise violating or causing or permitting the violation of the provision of this section shall be guilty of a class C misdemeanor, subject to penalty as provided in section one four one of the city code. Any such person, firm, or corporation shall be deemed to be guilty of a separate offense for each day, for each and every day during which any portion of any violation of this ordinance is committed, continues, or is permitted by such person, firm, or corporation. And lastly, in addition, the city may hold a lien against a property that contains an internal accessory dwelling unit if the property owner violates any standard for operation of an internal accessory dwelling unit. The amount, notice, and procedure for the lien shall be in accordance with state law. There is your internal accessory dwelling unit ordinance we'd like to add to the city. It might get tweaked a little bit. Go ahead, Thad.
Time in with some legal. And then, yeah, of course, as you know, this will go to the council and your duty is not to pass ordinances, but on land use ordinances, your duty is to review them and comment on them before they go to the council. That's the land use law process dictated by state law. But I'm glad that it is. I think it's good for this body to have comment on land use ordinances. Most of what's in here is reflects the exact language of state law. There's a couple areas where we're different, and I just wanted to highlight those so that you're aware. State law does require or does state that a city may require things that are necessary for the health, fire, and building codes. And so, for example, number eight of this ordinance says the total number of residents may not exceed the number allowed for a single-family dwelling. State law does not expressly say we can do that. But we already do that for fire and building code provisions. We already have, you know, a limit on on habit on how many occupants can be there. Also, on number two, well, that's not not not, let's go to number six. Number six is the one that talks about the type of installations for cooking facilities. State law does not say that. State law doesn't say we have to require a sink and a faucet and an oven. But fire and building codes have that requirement for dwelling units. And so some of these are areas that we're saying, hey, state law says we can allow fire and building code requirements. We're we're interpreting that to allow us to require these things. It might be that a court will conclude that state law doesn't allow us to require this. But at this point, it's a little the the state law, the way it's written versus the local concern for things like faucets and ovens. We certainly don't want anybody to think that they can build a an interior accessory dwelling unit and have a camp chef be the cooking feature, right? We want there to be an actual cooking feature that would be similar to other other residents. One other area where state law creates some ambiguity is number two. State law defines internal accessory dwelling unit as a dwelling unit that's created either within a primary dwelling or within the footprint of the primary dwelling at the time the in- interior accessory dwelling unit is created. Some people have interpreted state law to say that the dwelling, the unit has to exist before you can create the interior unit. Others say that the state law saying within the footprint means as long as it's planned within the within the blueprint of the of the original house. The house and the interior unit can be constructed at the same time, as long as it's planned, right? And so this ordinance says that, number two, says that the the interior accessory dwelling unit shall contain an already existing si- single-family detached dwelling unit. But state law, state law doesn't read that restrictive. It suggests that either needs to be within the dwelling, a primary dwelling, or within the footprint of the primary dwelling. Otherwise, everything in there is, other than the penalty provision, the penalty provision is unique to all ordinances that we do in Washington City. All the rest of it, though, is is essentially similar to what the legislature's already stated about interior accessory dwelling units. One of the reasons why the legislature enacted law on interior accessory dwelling units is in a lot of cities, they were prohibited altogether. And so the legislature wanted to create a space as per state law that would allow some form of interior dwelling units.
Awesome. Yeah, we went over, for those still here, we went over this quite a bit in one of our previous meetings, so we're somewhat familiar with these items already. Commissioners, do you have other questions or comments for staff? I will open this up at this time to a, this is a public hearing. So if there's anybody here in the audience or in the chamber that would like to speak to this item, please come forward at this time. Commissioners, I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing.
This is Commissioner Mitchell. I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Sheel, I second. All right, I've got a first and a second. Closing the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the public hearing is closed. Commissioners, at this time, any additional or last comments or questions before I entertain a motion?
What is the maximum occupancy for a single-family residence? It doesn't say.
I explained that to her. It's five right now by definition, and every city has that. We're just going to use that as every every city had to determine what a family meant. Because you couldn't just say it was a mom and dad and kids because of units that don't exist so many years ago. I don't know if it came with that. Oh, the act of discrimination, whatever, but all the cities had to come up with the definition of what a family was. So most of them pick anywhere from three to eight. And they then what they say is just up to three unrelated people make a family, five unrelated people make a family unit. So they had to create something that said that. So if I, you know, I was a single person, I wanted to rent out two of my rooms. You know, I could still do that, but they have to share the same cooking facilities and bathroom facilities, et cetera, et cetera, you know, like that. Just to be fair, for someone who had a family right next door, there, you know, if I don't have a husband or a wife or kids, then I'm discriminated against, you know, on the term. So years ago, family definitions came about in every zoning regulation. Ours is five.
Just to clarify, five isn't the maximum occupancy for a single-family home. Because that would, most of the families in our town would be in violation of that. The the fire. The the, we don't have an ordinance that says five. The fire code also looks at maximum occupancies, and with buildings or commercial buildings, they usually just look at the square footage, look at the use, and then there's essentially a a charting system that says, you know, this use with that much square footage occupancy is blank. With residences, it's more difficult, and Drew's really, Drew's correct, you know, defining a family is a hard thing. And defining how many individuals are in a family is a hard thing. Our fire department, the best, their best definition comes when they're looking at single-family residences that are being rented for nightly rentals in the allowed areas. And they look at the square footage, they look at a lot of things, and so they'll eventually say you can have up to so many beds in this unit. Right? But we don't have an ordinance that says a single-family residence can only have blank number of occupants, because again, it's hard to define.
Okay, because because this, the way it's written suggests that we do have a maximum.
We do have an interpretated interpreted maximum. We do.
If somebody came to me and said, how many can I stuff in this thing? I'm going to tell them five. And then they, if they want to make the argument, that's what we're, that the policy for the city is going to be five on that. Now, if it's a bigger unit, then we'll look at that.
Are you talking ADUs or single-family residences? Because her question was, what's the maximum for a single-family residence? And we've we've got many, we've got hundreds of.
We know that. We're, we're not going to argue that, Thad. We know we're in Utah, which is different than every other state in the Union. You know, we have a lot more people living in our houses than the average household does anywhere in the United States. We know that. But we never hold that, you know, those things in there. But every city does come up with something like that.
Now, the question was, for Washington City, what is the maximum occupancy for a single-family dwelling? And I tried to answer that and tried to give that answer. I'm not trying to interpret that.
Between one and one hundred.
It's, I just want to make it clear for folks that have more than five in their single-family residence that there's not a state law that makes that illegal. There's not a city law that makes that an illegality.
And that that's all true. We're all saying the same thing. It's just for any one of these, that's just what the policy is going to be out of my office. When it comes in, they'll say, well, how many? But I'm going to look at each one of them and say, you know, even if it's a three-bedroom place, I still want to say, well, the, you know, it's five. And then if they want to press whatever, we just don't want to turn it into somebody building one of these and having twelve people staying in a two-bedroom.
Yeah, and I think that's an important distinction, Commissioner. I'm I'm given the answer for a single-family residence. Drew's given the answer for an ADU within the single-family residence. And I think we're both probably right. But the answer we're both reaching is along different interpretations of the of the rules.
This is Commissioner Anderson. I have, so I have four four things here, four items here that I would be my recommendation that the city council change.
Hey, it was better than five.
Only four?
Only four. Okay. And I, so this will be my recommendation, the city council, look at these four things. Item C two, I think we should strike the the phrase already existing. If we if we leave it as already existing, it's, I mean, we're talking, you only do second stories, second story additions or basement, you know, units on there. And that's not what most people that are going to be wanting to add an interior accessory dwelling unit. They're going to be able to, you know, put an addition on the main floor and and rent that out. I just think having it, say, already existing makes it too restrictive. The second one is.
What do you want it to say? You've said, you made a statement, but I'm not sure what you're you're asking there. So, or maybe I just didn't understand what you were.
Well, so I mean, in in response to, because Thad had already made a comment saying that that this particular part is different than state law. And I think that having the item already existing in there, one, it strays from state law, but at two, makes it it makes it to where you're you're looking at the footprint of of the existing home rather than being able to say come in with a a blueprint of your house plus your your interior accessory dwelling unit at the same time.
So that you could actually do an addition.
Right, as long as you plan it as a dwelling unit at the same time. It's the way it's currently written, you could only do a second story addition or a basement remodel. So I just think that's too restrictive. Anyway, that's my first one. The second point, I think, C, C, C dot three, small clarification, but it just says that the 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 door to the interior accessory dwelling unit can't be on the front. I think what we're trying to say is that we don't want it on the the facing the street the same as the main, main door, correct? Yeah, I'm just saying, usually when these things are built, they're still on technically on the front of the house or just maybe on the side or side of the front. So I just think maybe saying, you know, street facing would be better than the front of the house. C dash, C, C dot three. It says we can't use a a detached dwelling that's connected by a breezeway. But I think that's probably the the best use of an interior accessory dwelling, because you know, currently, if if you have a a building, even if it's technically detached, but it's connected with a breezeway by at least eight feet, then it's it's not a detached, it's it's an attached unit per our zoning. And so I think by putting that sentence in there, saying that you can't use a breezeway for this, I think it defeats the whole purpose.
You know, so this isn't, this is an area that's subject to local interpretation. And it goes back to, again, I shared the state's definition is either within the primary dwelling or within the footprint. And in the Drew's office, again, they have the burden of trying to interpret what all this means in light of plans that they're looking at. And and so if if a breezeway isn't an internal accessory dwelling unit, then we probably have to allow it to be applied as an external accessory dwelling unit. We can't deny it on both counts. And Drew's office is going to have to draw a balance. If there's a breezeway shown on a blueprint, they might be able to argue that that's within the footprint. And Drew's office and and the technical folks that are trained on these things will have to try and work with the applicant on how to interpret that. But with it being a new state law and now a city law following that, there's going to be some areas that we figure out how to, how to, we'll learn with over time.
And again, just so you know, just everything I put in here was taken from four other cities already adopting these things. It wasn't something we just, and we don't, we don't consider breezeways attachments to houses.
But if we have, if we have a breezeway with a roof over it, and it's eight feet of attachment.
That's what a breezeway is, is a roof, but if it's if it's attached through the breezeway to the roof, if it's a second story of the home, I don't call those breezeways.
I just think that breezeway needs to be more clarified clarified better, because by the very nature of saying breezeways can't be used for this, that's what it sounds like. I'm just saying, if we have, if you have a detached, you know, building, if it has conceded whatever, and it's attached, you know, with 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 the roof more than eight feet, then we call that an attached, you know, for for setbacks and things like that. But you might still have a breezeway going through there. I'm just saying, if it says breezeways are not allowed, even if, even if you're saying it's not technically a breezeway, well, that's what everyone would call it as a breezeway.
But then, but then I think I have conflict with the the term footprint. Because a breezeway does not have, is not part of the footprint of the the primary structure. I mean, you can try to, you can try to, I mean, debate that, but I I it's two separate footprints.
I'm just saying, if you have, if you have a I don't, an outside unit, and it's connected to the house with a breezeway, it's it's part of the footprint. So I don't, I I'm just saying, I think city councils should strike the sentence that talks about.
No, we'll let them determine what they want to do.
Yeah, that's my recommendation.
At state law, the state law wasn't written to conform with our setback laws either. Like, like, there's going to be conflict between the cities and the and the application of state law.
You know, I'm not trying to argue this. I'm just, this is my point that I think city councils should should consider. The last one, I think that D, D dot one, I think that a misdemeanor is a bit harsh language on on this for people not complying. So that's my four points.
You know, that's that's just a judicial, I mean, I don't, there is nothing less than that.
Well, there is, there is less than the class C misdemeanor. It would be an infraction. The fine is about the same, but infraction can't be subject to imprisonment.
And I think that would be more appropriate.
Our our local courts don't put class C misdemeanors in jail either. But yeah. And the city councils, every every ordinance I've written so far, they bump it down. And so you're you're recommending the same thing that that the the council's done. So I'm sure they'll look at that closely, too.
All right, sweet. Anything else? Okay, we closed the public hearing. I will look for a motion on this item to send to city council as a recommendation for approval or is it denial? Recommendation, city council. Is that the correct terminology, Drew? Well, I'll look for a motion and see what happens.
Yeah, this will just be a recommending action. No matter what you recommend, it's going to go to city council on this one. So maybe don't, don't give too much.
This is Commissioner Anderson. I'll make a motion to approve consideration to amend a portion of the city code titled nine dash eight A and eight B, residential agricultural and single-family residential family zones, adding internal internal accessory dwelling unit, I A D U uses in these residential zones. And I would just note that the city council reviewed the the four points that I made in the minutes.
The shield, I would second that. I, I think it's a good one.
All right, I've got a motion by Commissioner Anderson. I've got a second by Commissioner Sheil. Commissioner Tuppo.
Aye.
Sheil.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Mitchell.
Aye.
I'm Hanson. I'm an I as well. Item number eight A on the books, we'll send that to city council with our recommendation. Item number nine A this evening is a discussion item and it's a discussion of the hillside protection regulation. And I will turn the time over to staff.
I never saw that.
For their report. Or Councilman Ivy, I believe, or do I turn that over to you? Drew, do you have something to introduce first?
No, we're just gonna just bring this out and Councilman Ivy's got.
Thank you for your patience, Councilman, for waiting around.
Chairman, planning commissioners and Councilman Henderson, loyal fans. It's my pleasure to be with you this evening. Um, I wanted to, um, share with you some of the conversation and some of the, some of the goings ons with the hillside committee. About nine months ago, Mayor Nelson asked me to join the hillside review committee. And since that time, we've been working on some things that we feel are important to bring forward. And so tonight I'd just like to share some of the information that, um, this is difficult down here. Just share some information that I think would be valuable for you. Um, you were just handed the hillside ordinance review. And I think, I think the over, the overarching, um, purpose for me being here was just to share some of the things that we would like you to, to look for and be aware of in planning commission. Just to help guide and, and give, give advice and direction so that this process is, is fine, is honed even finer than what it is. But just let me, just let me start by just, uh, stay, uh, reading this. This is where it says, when looking at developments, development on hillsides, we sometimes place more emphasis on safety issues while neglecting the visual significance and aspects of our hills. Once a hill is cut, it is nearly impossible to completely restore. We must have awareness across all departments of Washington City, maintaining scenic vistas of our hills is a priority for the mayor and council. So just a little personal note, um, I grew up in St. George, just in the shadow of the Black Hill. When the hill was cut, that's probably what prompted me to, to get into the political arena because I felt like that was such a, such a devastating blow to our city. And I don't mean to poke fun, but I just want you to know that that's my, my interest or the reason that we, we want to preserve our hillsides so that that, that doesn't happen. Of course, the purpose of the hillside protection overlay zone is to protect the health, safety and general welfare of the residents while protecting and preserving significant scenic resources for the long-term benefit of Washington City as a whole. You know, um, we have a, uh, we have a policy that is a good policy. We've been reviewing that with Drew and staff. And we feel like the policy is good, that it will do everything that, that we need it to do. It's just raising awareness when applicants come in so that these things are addressed on the front side. We must require enforced bonds on people wanting to develop hillsides so that we can mitigate and recover any damages that might occur when cutting and grading hillsides. So the council has had a couple of, um, agenda items that has proven to be problematic with hillsides. And I'm not going to go into detail other than to say that in one case, there was significant cuts before there was even any application in. And that, that was one red flag. And then we've, we've brought up some other ones that were not directly, um, that we really hadn't dealt with before, but that we wanted to include in the conversation. And that is a fill scar. You know, you think when you cut a hillside that it, that you cut it and it, and it leaves a scar from a, you know, a downward angle. But this, in this case, by filling the top of this, this bluff or this plateau, then that created a scar from where the houses sit from the top of the, the basalt in this, in this case. And the bonds that I mentioned is just simply in those height, in those areas where we feel like it could be a problem. It does two things. First of all, it lets the applicant or the developer know that they need to be careful. They need to make sure that they don't overcut or overexcavate or overgrade. And if they do, then we have a means to mitigate and to repair it as best we can. But you know, once it's cut, it's not like a bad haircut. It'll grow out. That scar will be there forever. So, um, that's something that, that we're talking about as well. We must elevate our desire to protect hillsides in all of our conversations and our actions. We must make it clear that we are determined to protect and preserve our hillsides. Public work should get involved. Um, I'll need to read that. We will identify and create a step between the work of the hillside committee and preliminary plat. And when we were talking the other day, Drew brought this suggestion up and he called it the, the cloud in between. And that cloud is a process where when we go out on, and I'm on the hillside committee, I should mention that, I think I did. We go out and we talk about the hillside with the hillside committee, which consists of, what is there Drew? Three or four? There's five total members. And I'm not a voting member on the hillside. I just observe and some of you know, I have a background in, in geology. So it's just a, it's something that, that I have some knowledge in. I don't vote, but I do listen to what the details are and what the suggestions are and what, what mitigation there could be to protect the hillside. In this step, what we do is we would come back with me with staff and we would talk about possible conditions that would be taken as part of the approval process. So that these things that have happened in the past wouldn't slide through without us being aware because as you know, once it's done and they have final plat, then there's no recourse. You know, that's the way it's going to be forever. So that's kind of, that, that's, that's our thought there. And it may be necessary for council to approve, um, hillside reviews. I, I don't think that that is where I personally want to go. I think that if we include that in conditions, then it helps the planning commissioners to see what those conditions are as they come through this body and as they go on to the council. But, um, this is probably the prevalent, uh, paragraph right here. We should be more willing to enforce a no build or no disturb areas. The city council may desert, start designating no cut areas throughout the city where it is crucial that we preserve hillsides. We must protect and reserve the visual resources which are significant value to the community. And then it lists what some of those, um, what those, uh, features are. And we must retain the integrity of significant onsite and offsite views to or from these resources. And what we're trying to do tonight, one main goal of being here is just to raise awareness. And not only in this body, but throughout the city that, um, Washington City is, is like taking a good, hard look at what those scenic vistas are. And it doesn't mean that we want to fly in the face of, of property ownership rights or that we're going to be heavy handed, but we want to preserve those, um, hillsides and vistas that are so important to our community. You have a, Drew, did we give the commissioners a copy of the, uh, the policy nine twelve A? Do you have that? That's in your packet? Okay, good. So I would just, um, I would just ask you to, to review this when you can and just to be aware. We're in the process of trying to finalize what this looks like. Mayor Staley actually asked me if I would, would come and kind of present this out so that, uh, so.
Everyone else has left the call.
I must be pretty boring then. Anyway, I guess, I guess. Anyway, um, are there any questions? Anyone that? Okay, I guess, uh, what I would do now is just turn some time over to, um, Jordan Hess. I don't know if you've been able to meet him or not. He's our public affairs officer. And, uh, he's been working with this as well. And then Drew, I'd welcome any comments that you have to kind of wrap this up, but appreciate being here tonight. Thank you.
How do you determine the bond amount? How do you determine? Do you know, uh,
Engineers.
Per foot elevation and?
Yeah, engineers are, are, that's one of the things they take is they have to determine by, you know, anything for a bond. They have to put a, be able to have and again, they're, they're good at this. They, they do it quite often. They have an established amount and then you take usually a hundred and ten percent of whatever that is. And then as things go or are not done, then you can give that money. Most bonds are a paper bond anyway. They're not cash anymore. So we just get a letter of credit basically is what it is and have that on file. But we will have the professional engineer determine what that cost would be for mitigation replacement. They, they have numbers and, and factors that can do that. So that's where we'd come from.
Part of the process is a criteria to find out what development would require a bond. Because of course, not all of them are, and that's something in the process.
Councilman Ivy, I have, I have a question. Well, just, just a thought. This is Commissioner Anderson. Um, one thing that I've always been a little bit concerned about, like, you know, when we, when we go to approve something and it does have a hillside, you know, like let's say it has a cut or whatever. Particularly on, on a cut, one of the things that I think it's hard for planning commission to envision and also city council is how much of a scar you're going to have. Cause you look at, you're like, okay, that seems like it's reasonable, but the one thing that, that people don't really take into account, you don't really think of till later is if, if I'm doing a cut, like to try and make some land flat, all right? And there are quite a few that we have approved. We now look back and go, whoa, that's a lot bigger scar than we thought it was going to be. If, you know, if it's a one-to-one slope existing, all right, which is what you would consider, you know, rolling hillside or whatever. If it's a one-to-one slope and they say, hey, I want to level out 20 feet of this, well, then you're going to have a 20 foot, you know, elevated scar. But if it's a two-to-one slope, which is more likely on some of our hillsides, that 20 feet of, of flattening the land results in a 40 foot scar. And if it's a three-to-one, you know, it's 60 feet of scar. And so the, the slope of, of the hillside behind where you're cutting into makes them the biggest determinant of how much of a scar you're going to have more than anything else. And that's something that we almost never see on any information. It's, it's usually just a matter of, oh, we're only cutting 10 feet here or 20 feet here or whatever. We're not touching the rest of the hillside. But if you've got a steep hill next to you, that's a massive scar.
So Commissioner, that's one of our goals is to try to provide better information on what the, or what the proposal is and, and how to mitigate or how to minimize. And we, you know, honestly, we felt, I would speak for myself. I think we've, I felt the same on the council. Because if you look at our code and they can, you know, you can cut so much and, but what's the overall effect? If you can cut to here, is that going to be retaining wall? Or are you going to carry that slope up the hill? And that's actually, you know, that comes into the question too of mass grading. And that grading a lot of times is used to accommodate those slopes that you're talking about.
Right.
But the overall idea is to get better information. And so that we have, we have a concise pattern as when you get your packets, you can look at each, each, uh, agenda item and have valuable information to make your decision on. And that's, that's, that's something that we probably are going to continue to work on. We're just kind of putting stuff together right now. We still have to talk to Council Seig, Seig Miller on the legalities of it. Because you know, there is property rights and we respect that. But I think that my, my own, I guess I would, would say that there has been some situations that has really demanded our attention for this. And so anyway, Jordan, if you want.
First of all, just want to take this opportunity to introduce myself, public affairs officer for the city. Been in the position for just a couple of months. I've had conversations with a couple of you, but, um, I'm always here to help if you have questions or need help communicating what you're doing to the residents. As Councilman Ivy mentioned, the policy's in a really good place. We don't feel like we need to make many changes to the actual policy. This is more of a communication awareness. Um, if we're talking about it here at the city, our residents will then understand that it is a priority for the city. One of the first things I noticed when I moved down to this area was the giant scar in St. George. And one of the first questions I had was what happened up there and who let that happen, right? We want to prevent that from happening in Washington City. So that if we can tackle it on the front end and, and to your question, a lot of those questions will be asked in that middle step between hillside and preliminary plat. Where we'll have a internal review committee of staff that will get together and they'll address, well, how big is the scar actually going to be? And how can we mitigate that? So, um, as I said, this is more of a messaging and awareness uh, across the entire city, all of the departments, making sure that everyone knows that this is a priority for the mayor, the, the council, and in my opinion, the residents of the city who'd want to prevent what's happened in, in St. George. And so, um, like I said, always here to help, answer questions, help message whatever you would like the residents to, to understand from your point of view. But thanks for having us here tonight.
So hillside issues are really complex. Our city has our slopes that have been cut too, unfortunately. We have our scars too. One of the ones that bothers me and, and there's several in our city that bother me is you come down telegraph and head up towards Coral Canyon on the south to the right. There's a utility scar that went right up over the hill there, right? And it's been about 10 years. So it's grown in with cheat grass, but it's pretty obvious it's not natural scape. But our ordinance has an exception for underground utilities. And, and the council that adopted this ordinance probably would have preferred that underground utilities go through open spaces than through houses and private property, right? And so there may have been a reason why that's an exception, but within our ordinance, we can work on some of those things. Maybe we don't think that's an exception that's still needed. Are you trying to show it, Drew? Are you just, okay, it's in, it's in nine twelve A two B one. Or, uh, exceptions, uh, B, B two. Anyway, so, so yeah, you'll see there number two, the construction installation, trenching, utility construction and backfilling of underground utility systems is an exception. But our ordinance, you'll see it's an overlay zone. Just because we have an overlay zone, doesn't mean it applies to every slope. We also have a zoning map and, and this only applies to those slopes that we've already identified as overlaid with this. And so another area that we might change as we keep working on this is we might change our zoning map and we might identify more slopes that we think should be protected by this. And so I'm just trying to identify a couple of areas where as this project keeps working on it, we, we might as a city decide that we want to protect more places. Um, we want to change the way that we protect them. Um, I, the one thing that I think is clear is everybody wants to protect our hillsides and the views that we have. And so I think that, I think that you folks, as well as the city council and city staff will do, do our best to work on these. So you'll see the red there, south of telegraph, Drew, that's where we have a big utility scar through it because it's an allowed exception. And there's probably good public reasons why we preferred that. But the reality is, is that's why it's in there is, is it was a, an allowed exception at the time. And that is in a slope that is a protected hillside by our overlay zone.
But even a, a review that would review that very thing, maybe there's some kind of, uh, reclamation that, that would be required now if we were to update that. But you can see the red that, that was mentioned, that's all hillside overlay. So one of our goals also is to identify a little closer what those hillsides are and maybe identify if we can even by slope, because that seems to be a big factor in what you can cut and how much you can cut. But I think the important thing is to understand is that within our policy, there may be some situations that we recommend a no build or a no, no cut. And when you have to wait and that's difficult, you have to weigh that against the public good. And, and it's something that we have to give, give more details on, but.
Other challenge we have is the hillsides that are impacted, but not by development. You know, dirt bike trails are a very common one. We've got a lot of hillsides that have dirt bike trails all over them. And we, we haven't, our hillside committee doesn't review that. You know, we've got a committee that's mostly full of engineers and geotecs, you know, professionals that work in these issues. But what do we do about the hillsides that are getting chewed up by, by recreation? Um, and a lot of times it's BLM. It's lawful recreation based on the property owner, but it's still one of our views. And so it's a complex issue, but I think it's, we're all committed to, to chewing at it. We, we need to keep working on it because I think it won't get any less important to us.
We won't. And I, I guess it's important for me to identify what I see my role on the hillside is. And that is to find a way to make it effective for our city. That we can protect our hillsides and still observe property rights, but understanding that those vistas are really owned by all of us and everyone that visits here. Councilman Henderson, would you like to add anything or? Would you like to, would you like to add anything? I'm putting you on the spot.
We've been solving the world problems here together. So I did.
Okay. Yep.
So I, first of all, appreciate you guys so much. This is a great, uh, planning commission, don't you think, Councilman? So these guys are fantastic. But anyway, I think our main concern is as a city council is. But anyway, I think our main concern is, as a city council is, it seems like we're always behind a step on these, you know, hillside things. It seems like, you know, before we know it, the hillside's cut and you know, there's nothing we can do about it. So I think, as Councilman Ivy said, we just want to be aware of it. And this is kind of the first place where, you know, you guys are kind of the first line of defense. And so we kind of want to make sure that we, you know, are aware of it and try to get ahead of the game before they start cutting the hillsides and, and like, like Councilman Ivy said, we've had a couple lately just get away from us. And, you know, once the hillside's cut, there's not a lot to do to fix it. So anyway, that's kind of where we're coming from.
So I guess the training will come through staff to us. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think we just need to put some procedures in place, like, like they said, we have a good ordinance in place. It's just a matter of making sure we're aware of it and putting some processes in place and.
So one of the first processes is we're trying to get written minutes from the hillside committee to the bodies that look at projects. We think that in, in some circumstances, the, the committee hadn't even provided those yet. In most circumstances, they've provided them, but we maybe don't have the way to give them as a record to the bodies. And so that's one of the first ones. And, but you're right, Commissioner Schill, anything that changes, the city will, will be the one to inform the commission.
The only one I know smart enough up here would be Corey.
Whoa, right here, dude. I'm sorry, but. Yeah, I'm out. They can't, maybe this is a legal question, but can't the legal penalties be so severe that we just know people aren't going to do it? Like you're out of business if you do that or whatever.
Well, I think the bond just has to be pretty.
I mean, even bigger, like huge.
Yeah, I mean, we could, again, the council is probably likely to reduce the penalty right now. You heard Commissioner Anderson, he felt like classy misdemeanors already stiff. That's about a thousand dollar fine max. Which isn't very high if you're a developer that has, you know, six million dollars of potential lots to develop, right? Pretty nominal. But even if the fine was, you know, a million dollars, Councilman Ivy's point is a really good one, which is once, once the infraction's been made, we, it doesn't matter how big our fine is, we can't, we can't reconstitute the natural surface the way it used to be.
Can't fix it either. That's the thing. It doesn't matter if they would want to.
Yep.
Here's from another angle, and maybe you guys see it from this angle, and I'm sorry to keep taking time, but it's, this is something that's bothered me. When I don't even remember the names of the players, which is good for this conversation. We went out there together to look at the hill that the one house sits at the top. And the gentleman, the way I remember it said, hey, this is my land. If you want to blow up those rocks and take them off of here and flatten that out for me so I can have more flat space, then go ahead and do it. And he did it. So we went out and looked at that after the fact where he had blasted to the ground. So there's nothing that really can be mitigated. Now me, coming new to the commission at that time, to this day, every single time I see it, it bothers me and I wish I knew who that guy was. Because I think very little about his integrity that he did that. And I look at it now, years later, that he got his money and he's laughing about it. And I think, man, if I could have put that guy out of business for doing that when he did it, he wouldn't have done it. And I think like, that's maybe obviously the extreme end of it, but that's how serious as a resident I would look at something to try to stop somebody. If they did it, they're going to know before they cut into that hill, what are the ramifications if I do this? If that means I'm in as bad as we can possibly make it. You said million dollars, I'd put everybody out of business. That guy should be out of business in my opinion for doing that. It ruined our hill forever. Exactly. So it's, it's, honestly, whatever it is, because when I do something in business, I know the repercussions before I do it, especially if I'm questioning what I'm going to do. I don't see why it would be any different here than the developers that do it and then kind of laugh at us and go, I got my six million for the rock walls around the city or whatever it was. And that unfortunately, the reason I think it leaves such a bad taste in my mouth is that was the attitude I got from one of the commissioners that had been here for a while that knows all the players and knows everybody. I remember thinking, I don't know who they are and I don't care. What they did is, it's unacceptable, period. So it just, I don't know. That's my rant. I just, I wish that none of these things were missed because now we're living. And if, if it was going to be a harsh and severe penalty to the nth degree, then I would think we'd have a lot less of it. Whether or not it's possible, I don't know, but that's, that's my vote, if you will. There's not a vote, but that, that's what I wish would happen.
So I'm going to put this, Commissioner Anderson, I'm going to play devil's advocate a little bit just because I think, I think the best way to do this is what Councilman Ivy said is, is through education and outreach because you know, you've got to balance the fact that if somebody buys the mountain, you know, they buy the hill, they own the property. And again, you as a resident don't own the right to look at their mountain. I mean, you don't, you know, they own their mountain. So the better thing is, is if you outreach, you know, you, you, you talk with them, you educate them. And if they already have hillside protection zones on their land, then that's something that, that, you know, it, their land is still regulated based on that. And if, if somebody buys land and they don't, and they don't realize that it has a hillside regulation on it, you know, in their mind, they're like, well, this is my dirt. I can haul it off or blow it up or do whatever I want.
Part of their due diligence to not.
And so I think, and I, so I think that the easier we make it for them to do that due diligence, the better, because then we have, we're, we're less likely to have some of this. I mean, the, the Dixie scar is a prime example, you know. It, as soon as that person that owned that land found out that, that, you know, big ordinance was coming down and you're not going to be able to touch your land anymore, you know, he was like, well, to heck with that. It's my land. I'm going to go do it. And I think the more we can educate upfront and let people know, you know, the reasoning for these things and what, what ordinances affect their land, the less likely we are to have knee jerk reactions like that. So I, I, I think education rather than trying to put someone out of business is a better way to go about that.
But let me mention Eldon is the staff member that, that provides the, the minutes for our hillside. And he does a great job. He does a great job. It's just when you're out on hillside. I'm in one conversation and there's one over here. And it's really, really hard to get everything in the motion because the hillside committee really is just approving or denying. And so what we're going to try to do is because we don't, we're not paying anyone to write the report. You know, we don't have an engineer write it up so we can bring it forward. So we want to identify those main points and then create not only if there's a bond or if there's conditions that would be specific to that application or to that agenda item. These, these are the items or these are the requirements with this to be considered by the planning commission, city council. And so those are the ways that we can get that information back because it's really hard to even when you talk about the complexities of some of the, one of the most recent ones that I mentioned before with the Phil scar was that they, we also addressed in that same conversation, scars that were created by previous builders. Ones, some reclamation that they had done on another part of it. And then when that group came in, there was just a little bit of confusion exactly about what was intended when they said, yeah, we're going to fix this. And so again, this is part of that process to identify what those are and hold people accountable. But I do think there should be punishments. Chairman, I do. And Commissioner, I think that it's our duty as a city to identify those areas. So when people purchase property, they know that that hillside overlay zone's in place. And there maybe need to look at a little bit and get some information upfront. Because I do agree, the time that we've allowed people to cut hills in Washington without permission and without understanding of what that is, needs to be in our rearview mirror. We need to, we need to have people come in and make applications based on what they want to do. And we, as the bodies, need to understand what those look like. So that we can help.
Can the hillside, I don't even know what you call it, but committee or whatever be a deed restriction on a piece of property? Can that be recorded?
I, I know that, and I'll let us council answer that, but I know that state laws allow, state law allows us to put bonds.
So when somebody comes in and does their due diligence on a piece of property, they see that there's a, a recorded issue on this property as far as a hillside.
So only by consent, only by consent. State law doesn't allow a city to put a deed restriction without consent of the owner. So CCNRs are by consent. No, our internal accessory dwelling units by consent. We can't just impose a deed restriction without their consent. Now, we might be able, we may say, hey, you want to, you're proposing a development within our overlay zone. Before you subdivided, we asked that you consent to this deed restriction on all your acreage. We might be able to do it like that. But we can't, we can't come in and just put it on property without consent of the ownership.
But it could be in the overlay zone.
Well, that could be one of the requirements of the overlay zone. And so when the hillside committee meets, they look at whatever the situation is of it. And most of their conversation is, is not about the view or it's, it's whether, whether this can be cut. And if it is cut, what is the mitigation and whether that can be accomplished, right? And so they do a lot of technical review as well. And that's why within our hillsides, we've got a lot of approved developments. Drew, if you go to like Lost Ridge and Washington Dome, that's probably a good example of really beautiful neighborhoods that exist within the hillside. Most of which were built with review of the hillside committee and also recommendations of mitigation that the developers had to do as, as kind of the slope elevated. Lost Ridge Drive down in the fields on Washington Dome. Keep going, a little bit more. And then, so it's right in there. Have you got the hillside protection overlay zone box clicked? There we go. So then pull over towards the east. Uh, that's west east. So you'll see we've got substantial developments and really nice neighborhoods along Lost Ridge that are on slopes. No, that's down in the fields. So Fields Road's just over to the west of that. Yeah, it doesn't, we've got more than you see already, right? Yep. Well, I'm just talking, I'm just trying to, I'm not specifically speaking to any of these. Some of those had cutting that we still have concerns about, or I'd say the council has concerns about. And some of those, I don't think, I've not heard any concerns about. But, but part of the hillside committee is to say, how, how can development occur here? And what will they need to do so that we would approve it, right? And so if they, if they have a motion to a pass, they'll frequently add the same type of conditions or comments like this board does. You know, we approve if A, B, C, D, E, F and G. And so I just want it to be understood, we, you can build in a hillside overlay zone if you can get approval and accomplish all of the conditions that the committee might, might approve. And, and again, one of the areas we might change is we might limit. You know, we may say, hey, there's some that just shouldn't be built. If we do that, we may face the contest from the property owner. We may just have to face the fact of some legal risk on that, right? But we may decide as a city that some of them just are unable to be built. And, and that's another area that we can work on as we try to make sure that we preserve the views that we think add to our quality of life.
So the hillside review, again, they do a great job of identifying the soils and this, whether it's safe to build there, whether it's good to build there. But they really don't have a direct concern with the vistas. That's more of a city issue rather than a county than a board that really isn't, that's our focus. That's my focus.
It's interesting because Councilman Ivy attended one and I won't identify it because it's not on the agenda tonight, but the, the hillside committee technical folks were all concerned about a prehistoric landslide. And Councilman Ivy are worried, and I are worried about the black rocks right along the rim, right? And so it's a very good example. They had, they had received a geotechnical report that talked about a landslide from some prehistoric time. That's what they were worried about as far as cutting because that might influence what the soils do based on what's underneath them, right? And, and I'm not a geologist like Councilman Ivy, so he probably was more concerned about the prehistoric landslide than me. But, you know, the rest of us are just looking at the hillside and kind of the crest and thinking, man, that's what we don't want to have.
Council's a pretty good amateur geologist. He throws it out once in a while.
Anyway, so that's a really interesting example. When you get the technical folks in the right report, they're worried about something that none of us can see. And I think Councilman Ivy and his effort is exactly correct. The actual look and fill of the views is not the first thing on the committee's list.
So let me leave you just one more thought and we'll let you get home to your families. So we were out on one review and the question was brought up. You've seen in basalt flows, the vertical lines, that's column or jointy. Creates the five sided columns that are vertical like the devil's post pile and those. There's one of those here that they said, well, that should be protected because it's such a, it's such an amazing, you know, vista. And that's something that maybe we need to discuss as well because yes, it is a, it is a vertical. Usually it's almost vertical. But it may not be in a hillside zone because of the size of it. So just to, just the last thought is that as we review this, let's continue to, to look and, and determine what that best practice is going forward. And please, as things come forward, you know, ask the questions that you have because as we identify this, I would imagine it's going to take a little bit of time and maybe some trial and error to really define it because there is some complex issues to this. But I think the one thing that we can agree is we need to do all we can to protect our hillsides. That's something that, that we're going to leave for generations to come. And, and I certainly don't want to be known for, as someone that, that allowed hillsides to be cut when it wasn't absolutely necessary or legal. So anyway, I, I do appreciate each one of you, your work that you do when things come forward to council. I, I just, I, I know the good work you do here and I appreciate your, your efforts very much. But we will look forward to bringing these forward and you're, you're going to start seeing some conditions on your approvals soon from the hillside. So thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Corey, just so I want to clarify something. It was my understanding that there was a hillside ordinance that covered this piece and there was kind of a, an unapologetic arrogance that went behind it. And I think that's what sticks with me that bothers me that it, that whatever was in place was ignored. And I think that with due diligence on properties that is identified, it's in that is certainly going to help. And I just feel like that, like I said, that unapologetic arrogance that did it and didn't care, that's something that we need to fix. And that's, I think that's what I meant. And by that particular product, I still feel the same way, but I understand there's another point and I'm just a new guy coming in at the time and looking at that going, that probably should have been done a lot better. And the more I think about it, the more I hear this, it's probably exactly what we need is something like that for sure. But we just can't, yeah.
So the council on, on one of them, I don't know if it's one you're speaking of, and I won't mention it in detail either. But the council actually voted to, to initiate a two week pause so that we could catch our breath and take a look at it and see what, what was done, if it really was as bad as it looked. And, and so sometimes we may have to even consider that is that until we get things in place, we just take a minute and say, you know, we need to look at this and make sure that we're, that we're all on the same page. So anyway, thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions from anybody up here today? Or from the staff? Anything else we need to address? Okay, I'll look for a motion to adjourn the meeting this evening.
This is Commissioner, Commissioner Mitchell. I make a motion to close the meeting.
Commissioner Tuppo, I second that.
All right, I've got a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you all for coming and we'll see you the next time. Thank you. Staff, thank you very much. Drew, Eldon.